Welcome to the November 5th, 2020 special meeting of the Planning Commission. Committee of the whole, Committee of the whole, the Committee allows for more detailed conversation and exploration of issues. This committee, like the Planning Commission, will likely operate in a virtual environment through the fall. I would like to ask for your patience as we use this platform for our public meetings. There may be slight delays as we transition between speakers, presentations, and participants. If any participants have issues with the technology, please send a message to the moderator. There's one discussion item on our agenda today, and there are members of the public here joining us today. I would ask that everyone be respectful of our time and ask that comments not be repetitive and be reserved to new topics. If you would like to speak, please send a message to the moderator. The discussion for today is rezoning case Z1320 Downtown South. Last week, we heard a presentation from planning staff on synthetic TIF and TIG. We also heard from stormwater staff, as well as a presentation from the applicant and public comment. We plan to hear from stormwater staff today when they're able to join the meeting, which should be around 5:15 PM. So I would ask that we hold any discussion or questions on stormwater until they're able to join. We'll start today with a presentation from planning staff on equitable development around transit. I would ask commissioners to hold all questions until the conclusion of the presentations and any public comments. I would also ask each commissioner to be recognized by the chairperson before speaking. We've heard from many sources throughout this process for this rezoning case, from staff, the applicant, the public, including over 400 emails. And through this, there's been several common themes. One, certainty in development, i.e. specific details and conditions, stormwater and transportation. And just as a reminder, further studies or additional conditions, the Planning Commission can really make an impact in these particular areas. And with that, I believe Matt Clem will be presenting on behalf of city staff. Mr. Commissioner O'Haver.
Yeah, Tika, I might need to recuse myself from this discussion as we're involved with this project.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Haver.
And I do apologize, I will need to jump off. I will, I will be back as soon as possible. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, Chair, give me just a second. I'll pull my slides up and we'll get going.
Great, thank you.
Can everyone see the screen presentation here? Okay, great. So just a quick reminder of your deadline, January 11th, 2021, and we'll get right into the presentation. This is what I plan to cover today, timing and next steps for the rezoning process. A preview of the Equitable Development Around Transit Plan was requested, so we'll go through that. Ken will provide an update on the tax increment grant based on council discussion and action yesterday. We'll hear from the applicants, the public, and we'll have time for discussion, and then finally stormwater, when our colleagues join us from their other meetings. So you have four regular meetings left in your review period for Z1320. These are all regularly scheduled meetings. There have been two revisions to zoning conditions that cannot be acted on by the Planning Commission yet because they weren't submitted at least 10 days before this meeting. So there was a submittal on the 28th of October and a submittal on the 4th of November yesterday. You can act on the October conditions after November 7th, and you can act on those November conditions after November 14th. You can do that at a regular meeting of the Planning Commission or a special meeting if you choose to host another one, but there is some timing based on when you can act on those changes. The October 28th conditions are included in your backup, and that revision added condition number nine in response to stormwater staff comments and restricts development in the fringe, consistent with a forthcoming tech change. So that was added. And the conditions yesterday that were added clarified how art would be reviewed and selected for inclusion in the development, and it ties that review to the Raleigh Arts Commission and their Public Art and Design Board and says that they shall be consulted, action of art or an artist in regards to condition number four, but to help ensure that any art installation reflects the culture and heritage of the local community. And so you can act on that condition after the 14th, but they've been offered, but they're not actionable at this time. And also, based on conversations I've had with the applicant and what I believe has been represented to y'all in the past, to various planning commissioners, that there may be additional zoning conditions or amendments forthcoming. I'll let the applicants address that in their presentation. And so at the last meeting, the Commission requested a preview of the Equitable Development Around Transit Plan and prepared a few slides to walk through the plan, and your official review will begin later this month. Before getting started, it's really important for everyone to understand, those on the Commission and everyone watching at home, what about to walk through has not been reviewed, approved, or vetted by the Planning Commission or the City Council. So what that means is that the policies and actions here do not represent the official policy of the city or the position of the city because they haven't been adopted yet. And until they are adopted by the City Council, that these are draft representations of what staff has outlined based on the Equitable Development Around Transit study. And again, these policies, until they're adopted by City Council, they don't provide any official guidance to private development or guidance for planning and zoning decisions made by the city. So just a bit of a caveat there. The Equitable Development Around Transit Plan is intended to create a framework to guide future development around the four BRT corridors. The plan includes policies to guide private development and planning. The plan also includes policies and actions that are intended to guide city activities, including identifying a new funding source for subsidizing affordable housing, expanding equity programs, and improving infrastructure, that funding sources, the equity funds that we discussed last time. Through upcoming planning studies, starting with New Bern Avenue Station Area Planning, which we're engaging in over the next few months, we're kicking off, we will begin to put equitable development policies and actions in place with more precision as we continue to plan for the future of these corridors. So the Equitable Development Plan set out to answer these two main questions, how much affordable housing should be kept and created in and around BRT, and how much of the city's overall growth should be accommodated near BRT. And so in response to what we heard throughout the planning process, staff has prepared a suite of comprehensive plan amendments across these six sections of the 2030 Plan. The intent here is to infuse equitable development principles and planning and zoning decisions through new policies to direct the use, excuse me, through new policies and to direct the use of funding to support equitable development and city activities programs through new actions outlined in the plan. And so I'm going to go through each of these sections and what we're recommending to change there, one by one. And so this is the growth framework map. This is not necessarily a policy map, but the city's idea and estimation of where growth will occur in the city. And so what we've done to this map is realigned the Bus Rapid Transit corridors with the most current planning for BRT. And a critical part of the growth framework section two is we've updated the text to accommodate more of the city's growth in BRT areas. So right now, the growth framework for the city is that 60% of all new growth would be accommodated in a series of mixed-use and commercial centers, as outlined on this map and is also shown in the urban form map. What the Equitable Development Around Transit Plan recommends is of that 60%, accommodating half of that in BRT areas. So that's a change to the framework section. We created a new map for the land use section that identifies the location of each BRT transit station and assigns to each of them a station area type, and that's this map here. The station area types are linked with additional height guidance in an updated version of Table LU2, which recommends specific building heights for certain areas. There are also numerous text policies and actions regarding to land use. So the new land use policies and actions are grouped across six themes that emerged from the planning process. I'll read through them here. Enhance affordability, minimize displacement, preserve existing businesses, generate job opportunities, guarantee pedestrian safety, grow around transit, and ongoing input and measuring results. These policies and actions are, across these themes, are intended to promote equity around BRT through guiding private development and directing city-run programs and spending practices. So there are 10 new policies and three new actions, and I'll go through them quickly. Enhance affordability and minimize displacement. These policies establish an expectation that the city and private developers will work together to provide more affordable housing near BRT. Action 4.5 is intended to advance these policies by revising the existing transit-oriented development overlay zoning district to include a density bonus for housing when a development includes affordable housing. This is achieved by permitting additional building height when affordable housing is included. Action 4.4 will create the funding source to support the creation of new affordable housing in BRT areas by creating the equity fund, which we talked about. The purpose of this fund is to spend money, expand equity programs, and other activities associated with equitable development in the corridors. Preserve existing businesses and generate job opportunities. These policies are intended to guide city practices for assisting small businesses during the construction of BRT and ensure that local workers and construction companies are prioritized in government contracts related to BRT construction. The action in this section recommends a density bonus for non-residential uses to incentivize employment-generating development. This bonus for non-residential uses is planned to be less of a bonus than what is given to residential uses, being that affordable housing and creating more places to live is a higher priority in these areas based on what the plan is currently recommending. So guaranteeing pedestrian safety, providing safe and comfortable access to transit stations is essential to equitable development because no transit rider should be exposed to unsafe travel conditions on the way to catch the bus, especially those who rely most heavily on transit. These policies are intended to guide future design and planning decisions for equitable development in the station areas, which, like I said, we're going to have more planning in the near future, starting with New Bern Avenue. Basically, the up is that infrastructure in station areas should prioritize pedestrians and cyclists above motorists. Grow around transit and ongoing input and measuring results. So growing around transit and monitoring the results of our planning is a fundamental component of the study and the plan recommendations. These policies work to accommodate more growth in the BRT corridors, including encouraging a broad range of housing types, and it requires staff to continually monitor development around BRT to ensure that the goals of providing more affordable housing and growing around transit are being achieved. Something isn't working with the recommendations in the plan as it's adopted, the annual reporting will help us redirect or restructure these policies to better achieve the goals of the plan. So we'll constantly be monitoring how we're doing. The urban form map is recommended for updates to add transit station areas and expand the core transit area around them. The purpose of the urban form map, of course, is to guide zoning and land use decisions by applying urban frontages, which it will continue to do in station areas. The map has also been realigned with the most current planning for the BRT routes. We also eliminated duplicative policy language and symbology from the map to improve legibility and clarify intent, so we think it'll just be more user-friendly based on the changes we made here. Housing and economic development sections are recommended to get two new policies and eight new actions. New Policy and Housing Section is aimed at guiding private development and city activities. The policy is advanced by the recommended density bonus that staff is currently drafting for the overlay district and is expanded, excuse me, is also accommodated by expanding the equity fund. And all the actions here specify activities that could and should be funded by the equity fund. So again, these actions provide specific programs and activities that the city should expand on or create. And the last section, Economic Development, the policy and action in this section is intended to guide city practices to better achieve equitable development. And that's, and that's what I have. I'll pass it over to Ken for an update on the tax increment grant based on council's action yesterday, and I can go ahead and close the presentation if that's helpful.
Thank you.
Okay, so on the council agenda yesterday was a discussion of tax increment grants, which was a discussion that was both general in nature, what is the tool, how would the tool be implemented, what are some parameters around it, as well as specific, which would be making Downtown South a potential participatory or make the development participate in a tax increment grant arrangement or contract. The council authorized staff to take some preliminary steps, and there were three of them. One is to develop a citywide tax increment grant policy. So the council was not comfortable moving forward with any specific tax increment grant agreement until a citywide policy was either in place or at least substantially under development. Second one was to develop a community engagement process, including potential committee structure to help oversee that community engagement process. And the third was to outline key business terms that would compose a tax increment grant. So these items are going to be reported back to at the next council meeting on November 17th, and the timeline for actually having any of these things ready for consideration would be January of next year.
We can now hear from the applicant.
Yes, thank you. This is Monty Lord, and I appreciate y'all's time today, and we're looking forward to the conversation, and the team has been working on a lot of different components of this. Significant portion of the work has been focused on our stormwater conditions, and that's entailed, doing site analysis, infiltration analysis, looking, revising the storm downstream analysis for first staff's recommendation, and broadening that analysis, which has also been submitted to staff, and we've been consistent with their recommendations. And we'll get into that later, of course. Would like to talk through several components of this, just to make sure everybody is on the same page. So next slide, Pete, please. So again, just a reminder that this area is in the three parcels in the southern part of the city, along the Beltline and South Saunders and South Wilmington. And as we discussed earlier, there's no substantial development that have happened on the southern portion of the Beltline, and there's a significant reason for that. The retail and restaurants look at whether they're going to go into an area based on the income of the surrounding area and their forecast of the ability of the immediate neighborhood to support the development. Hence, the developments with retail and restaurants and amenities have gone in areas with more affluent neighborhoods surrounding them. That's just the fact of how retail restaurants work and how they make their decisions. So in order for this to be a successful development that brings in services and retail and restaurants, it can't be done in the normal way. It can't be like the other developments around the Beltline that are in affluent areas. There have been, you know, comments comparing North Hills and Downtown South, and I would say that the big differences are that North Hills is surrounded by an affluent area, and thus the retailers and restaurants will agree to sign leases in the area. That would not be the case here. There wouldn't be the opportunity to create that retail and restaurant presence without some other component coming into it. And the way to get those retailers and restaurants to sign on and be willing to participate and create this district, there needs to be a draw. There needs to be a way to get people there so that they've got traffic and bodies that they can count on to be shopping in their stores, eating in their restaurants, utilizing their services, and so forth and so on. And so by establishing a significant, so we know we have to establish a significant draw to make this a success for the surrounding areas and success for, as a project that people want to go to and providing those amenities. And so the entertainment and sports venue creates that draw and creates a stream of bodies coming into the area that will support retail and restaurants and allow the economic impact to spill over into the surrounding communities with the right interventions, which there's a lot of programmatic components to making sure that economic impact does indeed extend the neighborhood, and that is workforce development programs, which will hire from the surrounding neighborhood and then build a complement of services around that program, around those individuals participating in those programs. So it's not just window dressing, but there is a high degree of success, a high percentage of success of the enroll, those who are enrolled in that workforce development program, that they get skills, they get training, they get all the complement of skills in addition to just the work skills. It's far beyond that. There are supportive services needed to build this capacity. And setting up those workforce development programs that are fully inclusive and fully supportive and truly build capacity requires a lot of effort and money and resources. And in addition, we understand fully that this site, there's a strong desire and a need from an equity standpoint to provide affordable housing in this community. And affordable housing, we all understand and have heard about gap financing, and there needs to be some money to fill that gap between what traditional financing will underwrite and what the project can earn to cover those, that underwriting, to cover those costs of debt. So this all is what has led us to this conclusion that, vis a vis North Hills, North Hills does not have affordable housing because it does not have a TIG. It does not have a entertainment and sports venue because it does not have a TIG. It is able to attract retail and restaurants because of the demographics, but that's the only thing that is analogous. And further, no one, everyone has suggested that this should not be North Hills. And so if it's going to be not North Hills and include a attractive to make it a truly viable area and deliver affordable housing and deliver workforce development programs and educational programs and all the things we've talked about before, there needs to be a way to get there. And so that's what we've been pursuing. That's what we're talking about overall today as a project. However, I think that concept is not the issue. That concept is generally well-received. Everybody thinks that that sounds like a great approach. The real issue comes down to sequencing of the process. And what, the situation we're in right now is that if this project cannot be sequenced in a way that the TIG goes first and the rezoning follows because the TIG is dependent on the rezoning and the allocation of the land use in order to build, and that's our foundation off of which we will build the TIG framework and the equity fund and flesh out this vision with full public input, as staff has recommended to council over the coming months. And we are fully prepared to begin community outreach and canvassing as soon as the rezoning is approved. And as I've talked to all of you all, that's our full intent to go through a robust citizen engagement process, as with the TIG, as that is a big question for the city. Because the question we're dealing with today is the one of, is this the right land use for the city? The question that we have to answer in the future is, is a tax increment grant and an equity fund the right implementation for this site to deliver these benefits and finally develop the southern gateway into our downtown, which for many, many years has remained an empty parcel and remained with undeveloped, without any plans for how to develop it and how to make it a great project and a draw for the community. So I just want to kind of go through that to make sure that we're on the same page and understanding how we got here from a logical standpoint and also recognize that this puts everyone in a really challenging position because there is, we're saying we're going to do a lot that we acknowledge, we can't put a condition on it. We can't condition if it, you know, if the TIG passes, then the rezoning goes into place because that's contract zoning. And there are logistical complexities of this, and at the end of the day, there's three choices before you all, which are to vote it up, vote it down, or not do anything with it and see if it dies. And I have no confidence that if this is delayed for very long, that it will survive. And I, as I've talked about with you all before, I served in the planning commission, I've served on the city council, I realize this is an extremely atypical question to be put before the planning commission, and it's entirely reasonable, the wrestling that you all have done with it. And I greatly appreciate your service and care to make sure our community is amazing and delivering on the promises that are written out in the conference plan and need to be delivered for this community. And so maybe that's a little bit of a framing that may be helpful. We can move on to the next slide. You can see You can see here the incredible connectivity of the site that we've talked about in previous discussions, the roadway connectivity, the greenway connectivity, the BRT connectivity, the bike ped connectivity, create an environment that's accessible and no matter what mode of transportation you are using, you can get into and out of the site easily. And it also creates, is where our city needs to grow in transit supportive, vertically-integrated walkable mixed-use development that has access to amenity and opportunity. And the only reason this site has not developed and wouldn't develop if we haven't, hadn't come up with this approach over time with lots of counsel from others and discussions because it's incredibly well-connected, yet it still can't develop without help and without a true draw to make it, bring in the bodies and dollars that the retail restaurants need to see. So, next slide. All right, so now I'm going to turn it over to Molly Stewart to go through some of our analysis of the EDAT. And the EDAT is an amazing document. Granted, certainly you all are going to review it, council's going to review it, we would suspect that there will be adjustments to that. Potentially this discussion today could guide some ultimate adjustments to that. However, we have looked through it and endeavored to meet the expressed goals as best possible within the framework that we're operating. A number of these things were, or probably the majority of it, is things the city should do. The significant portion of it is reinforcement or restatement of the comprehensive plan. And there are very few technical recommendations which we can follow, you know, through a condition, however, we have endeavored to follow those as best possible. So with that, I will turn it over to Molly Stewart, who will walk through our analysis of the EDAT.
Thank you, Bonner. So I just wanted to take a few minutes today to talk through a few of the goals and the design principles that we see in the draft EDAT today and talk about in particular how this zoning proposal can help the city deliver on some of these goals. So at its highest level, the guidebook's vision is one of putting things on the transit corridor, so putting the housing on the corridor, putting the jobs there, the services, and then importantly, seeking to ensure that those housing, the jobs, the services, those are available to all. And that's obviously the main goal here. So one key characteristic of the station areas is that there to be, in addition to downtown, the most public areas of the city accommodating the most people, the most uses. And, I'm sorry? Oh. Many of the specific goals of the EDAT are well-served by the proposed zoning. And I'll start with that, that first one you see there, enhancing affordability and minimizing displacement. So affordability has, you can come at that from a couple of ends, and one of them is simply supply and density. And so obviously that is integral to this proposal. And with the mixed use, the dense development, we can accommodate smaller units in a multifamily configuration, which allows for great flexibility in reaching many income levels. And then, of course, the EDAT contemplates further deepening that affordability through the Equity Fund concept. And as you're aware, there's a version of that Equity Fund concept under discussion at the City Council. In addition to affordability, the goal seeks to minimize displacement. And you see there on your screen, this is a quote from the guidebook, which tells us that the southern corridor has the greatest amount of large-scale underutilized parcels of all the corridors and the least residentially zoned land. And so if we're seeking to minimize displacement and maximize the return on those transit corridors, this is the ideal place to put that density and to serve all of those uses. Another goal is to generate job opportunities. And as the EDAT says, the BRT can connect people to opportunity, but only if residents of all income levels and races are able to live and work near the service. So this factor is key, and this is inherent in placing mixed-use density right on the city's strongest transit spines. And as a place to generate those job opportunities, the southern corridor, obviously, again, a great target even among the BRT corridors, being the corridor with the highest probability rate. Next slide, please. Perfect. A couple of additional goals that are found in the guidebook are to guarantee pedestrian safety and that, you know, dense grid system with the mixed uses, that is a great way to reduce overall vehicle traffic and improve safety. And growing around transit, that one I think is too obvious to go into in any further detail. That is certainly the goal of this proposal. Next slide, please. In addition to the goals of the guidebook, there are also design principles included, and a few of the key design principles are here on your screen. All of these are things that dense mixed use is particularly good at. So in particular, I'd like to focus on that managing parking effectively, where the greater the density, the greater the mixed use, the more there can be a sharing of that parking among the different uses. So this is an opportunity that we can provide to deliver on all of these goals and design principles that the guidebook is contemplating. Next slide. So this slide hasn't changed since you saw it last time. It is the high-level summary of our conditions. And there's not a lot to say about it. You heard from Matt Clem, the one edition that was made, and that is just a little bit more of a level of detail than would show up here in this very high-level summary. So I will go back and turn it back to Bonner Gaylord.
Yes, thank you, Molly. So we have looked at how to improve the, improve the case and match the EDAT standards and are happy to talk about any of the components that the Planning Commission feels like we should address. And I think it's probably, given that we've talked a lot about the EDAT, probably a good time to pause and hear any responses from the Planning Commission or requests or questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gaylord, for that presentation. I think what I would like to do, if the commission is amenable to this, is to take public comment and then we can bring it to the table. Great. Can the moderator announce the first?
Yes, so our first speaker is Bob Geary.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, well, that's surprising that I'm being called upon, but try to wing this. I heard Bonner say that he didn't want this to be another North Hills, and I think that's right. I don't think it should be another North Hills. But then I heard him say that we need a draw so that we can make it another North Hills, so that we can have a lot of restaurants and retail uses. So I didn't quite follow the logic of that. I was struck by the connectivity map, as I always am. This area is going to develop. The BRT is designed to help it develop. Dix Park will help it develop. The developments that have already been approved between downtown and this area will help it develop. I don't think it needs a draw. What I do think it needs is organic development, and what I'm struck by is the attempt to parachute a giant development into the site before the site really would organically grow it by itself. And in order to do that, a stadium is imposed upon it. And then the developer obviously hopes it will be another North Hills, mega-density, lots of retail and restaurants. There's loose talk about affordable housing, but none is conditioned into this case. And I think this whole thing puts the cart before the horse. The applicant is not committing to one single thing in this development. Bonner has a vision, but he isn't writing it down for anyone to follow or to trust that he's committed to it or that John Kane is committed to it. So, you know, I think this rezoning case is very important to get as many commitments as possible from the developer. And I also think that this is a site that will develop over, I think Bonner said at an earlier meeting, 10 to 15 years for the first, for Zone C. So there's really no reason to jump to a stadium, to jump to a North Hills-style development right now. Let the site develop as a complement to what's around it, as a complement to the communities above it, closer to downtown, and below it downstream from this site along Walnut Creek. That's, I mean, I didn't, I didn't prepare anything to say, but that's off the top of my head. Thanks for calling in.
Thank you, Mr. Geary, for your comments.
So next, we have Maria Spalding.
Thank you to the chairman and members of the Planning Commission. I'm having to move around a little bit because I'm having some work done at my house and as noisy as it can be. So I won't mind if you cut me off if it becomes unbearable to tolerate any external noise. This is the first time that I have attended a meeting regarding this subject. It has been very interesting so far. And I would say that the one thing that I am very troubled by is the lack of community engagement now as it's being created. I believe that there are a number of resources, a number of talents that could be brought into this particular project that might help shape its success. But I'd like to have some conversation regarding the nature of the project and what has already been done regarding community engagement. And that is my primary concern in addition to some of the environmental issues and the actual components, specific components of the project itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spalding.
So our next speaker is Tanyana Height.
I wanted to comment on two things. Firstly, just about this, this idea of development in affluent areas versus in this area, because I think it's been a theme in previous meetings, there was, there was a comment about if development were not happening in this neighborhood, then people would be asking why development is only happening in affluent areas. And I just want to say that I think that nobody is saying that we should not have development in this area. The question is just how it goes about and just making sure that the benefits of this development happen to the community and that is it, that it's an inclusive and participatory process that really takes into account what residents really want to see in their community rather than having ideas foisted upon them. And then secondly, I wanted to comment on the storm roder aspects that were brought up in the last meeting. Chris Bass Engineering has taken an initial look at the preliminary downstream impact analysis put forth by the developer. In general, the study falls far short of addressing our concerns and includes many oversimplifications that are inappropriate for this complex watershed. We believe that the community deserves far more detailed information, which is precisely what we described in our previous request. We have been contacted by the developer to set up a meeting and are looking forward to the chance to interact with them directly and to explore whether and how we can work together cooperatively going forward. But until then, we hope that the commission will not come to any conclusions about potential impacts as the provided study does not support them. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
So I'm going to ask if any other participants here want to speak to message the host, and I will go ahead and unmute you. And again, anybody else who would like to speak, please just message the host and I'll put you unmuted.
Good afternoon, members of the Planning Commission. I just wanted, there are a couple of things that I wanted to say. I don't have prepared remarks for today, but one of the things that I think troubles me with several comments that have been made through this process is the fact that there's affluent everywhere except for this corridor. And I want to speak to the history of the development of the city of Raleigh. In 1792, the city boundaries were established in a one-mile radius with the streets named north, south, east, and west. And obviously, we have grown beyond that. Raleigh was crisscrossed by creeks and watersheds. As a result, high hills, long ridges, and dank bottoms characterized Raleigh's terrain. Antebellum residents, for reasons of health and aesthetics, chose the higher sites for their homes. The low-lying areas were for industrial development or lay vacant. After reconstruction, freedmen who came into the city of Raleigh settled in areas east of East Street and south of South Street. Because of their poverty, they were only able to purchase the less expensive land, usually in the creek bottoms or other less desirable locations. And if they couldn't purchase, those were also the areas they had to rent in. The white property owners would divide the land they owned in those areas into smaller lots to sell, creating black majority there, and those segregated trends still remain today. The, most of what I just read to you came out of Dr. Wilmuth Carter's, The Urban Negro in the South, that was written in 1961. Dr. Carter was a professor at Shaw University and well-recognized for historical review. And her book is, even though it's out of print, still quoted today. And I just want to say that the trend of not developing in South Raleigh is based on systemic racism. And I think that just has to be called out. It might not be something we want to hear, but sometimes the truth just needs to be stated. And so, yes, this one area of the city is not surrounded by affluent people because, I mean affluent people, because that has been the history of our city. The other thing I wanted to talk about, even when you look at the site connection map, you will see that as the lines spread out and they go further into southeast Raleigh, there's not as much connectivity. And so the bus rapid transit, the EDAT plan, all of that is trying to increase or take care of some of that lack of equitable development in the south. If you drive through South Raleigh today, you will see gentrification. If you drive through it and you look for it, it is there. You will see houses that have been purchased and are redeveloped, some because the owners died and their families no longer want to live there, but some of the practices of But some of the practices of purchasing are horrible. Okay, enough on that. So then you're told that the, the only things that you have before you are to vote up, vote down, or to do nothing. And if, if this is delayed for long, the project won't survive. Common sense says that a businessman does not go into this type of planning, this much purchase, for a development that's not going to happen. And granted, they can sell the property back off that they have already purchased if the development doesn't happen. And I'm not saying that the development shouldn't happen, but I'm saying this development, because of its size, because of what it will cause the city in growth and in loss, deserves the very deep look that you all have been taking. And I want to tell you thank you for looking, because I don't feel like you have seen everything that you need to see. Pretty pictures do not tell what a development is going to look like. It's just pretty pictures. I believe last, at the last meeting, someone, one of the commissioners asked for a list of the people that had been at part of the community engagement process as much as possible. I don't know if you all have received that, but that, that is important because you need to know if the people who live in the area have actually been talked to by the developers or if the developers have only talked to the quote "leaders" end quote of southeast Raleigh. The people will be affected, not just the leaders. And so, the people are the people who need to be heard from. We have been trying to get to people, whether it is canvassing, which was something else that the developer has said today, they can't do until after the rezoning. If they actively really want to engage the community, they can engage the community. They know how to do it and they have the resources to do so. If we can do it, if I can do it with no resources, I know that they can do it with their resources. And the last thing, if our, our 40-story heights of buildings that you don't have plans for at this point, the only way to get density in this plan, I don't think so. Thank you so much for hearing me out today. I appreciate your work. I know this is hard work because I've been trying to read through the same documents that you all are reading through, and there's a lot. I have, I know how many reams of paper I have used printing things out so that I can go through them. So I want to thank you for your service today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coffin.
So that was the last of our speakers. Bonner Gaylord has requested to be able to respond to some of the speakers.
Yes, I think that would be great if the applicant would like to respond to the questions from the public. Thank you.
Actually, pardon me, I'm sorry. I do have one more person who would like to speak. That's Mary Abrams. Sorry for interrupting, but I'm going to go ahead and unmute Mary Abrams.
Hi there, thank you. This is Mary Abrams from the Wake Audubon Society again. And last time, we had deferred comment on stormwater implications, so we'd like to discuss that today. We would oppose any construction in the floodway, including the floodway fringe, because this could lead to habitat fragmentation and loss, two major threats to birds. Condition nine of the rezoning application currently allows for certain exceptions like parking and heliports in the floodway fringe. And while we appreciate that to some people, putting infrastructure in the fringe that can withstand flooding seems like a good use of space and money, there's a cost of not keeping that space in a natural state. Maintaining the floodway fringe as a natural area will accrue numerous public benefits such as cleaner water, less local and downstream flooding, and mental health benefits. So even if this rezoning request is approved, we oppose construction in the Walnut Creek floodway, including the floodway fringe, and ask that the floodway either remains undisturbed or is improved in a manner that would minimize habitat loss and fragmentation and ensure wildlife access to the creek. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Abrams.
Okay, I do believe that was the last speaker that we had.
Okay, great. So we will now hear from the applicant if he'd like to respond to the question from the public.
Yes, I could respond. So I'll go individual referencing Bob's comments on if, if, if those, something with this.
Mr. Gaylord, you're breaking up a little bit. There's a lot of background noise.
Yeah. I think.
That's much better.
Yeah, I think someone was unmuted for a moment. The, so addressing Bob's question about using a stadium to make it North Hills, that's certainly not the intent. Every place that has retail restaurants is not North Hills. There are retail restaurant environments that are created and crafted that reflect the surrounding communities. And all retail restaurants are not the same. All services are not the same. The retail restaurants that would go at North Hills versus downtown are very, very different. And the way to get to the answer of what those should be is through a community engagement process that we're committed to proceeding through with the tax increment grant discussion. That is the opportunity for that granular community conversation about how the development is going to accurately reflect the neighborhood. No rezoning that goes through does that. No rezoning says it has to be retailers, restaurant services that reflect the neighborhood. However, we're committing to enter into a process where that very well will likely be the outcome, is that there are prescriptive, community-based outcomes that are required for us to accomplish. And so, this is never going to be another North Hills. It's not a entertainment and sports venue to, to accomplish that end. It is to accomplish something much more relevant to the neighborhood and with a long-lasting and great impact to the surrounding neighborhood. Addressing Ms. Spalding, I know that there have been a number of conversations with folks at St. Augustine's, and we look forward to more conversation. And I would, will be happy to address the engagement piece. I'd like to save that for the end. To address Mrs. Height, when we're asking what do residents really want to see, that's what, that's what I already talked through about, the, the community engagement through the tax increment grant. And it is going to be what the neighborhood wants to see, and we're committing to a process that will provide those answers and will provide contextual development that's reflective of the surrounding communities. And addressing the component about Chris Bass, we, we have tried to sit down with, with Chris Bass. He is out of town this week, and we are trying to set a meeting for Monday, have not heard back of his availability. I will say that his response to the study was an old study, and those are constantly in revision. And with him unable to communicate and meet, it's hard to keep him up to speed on where everything is. And I look forward to meeting him. Our team looks forward to meeting him. We, we have, as of yet, never met, unfortunately. But, but we remain ready to meet. And ever since we, we learned that he was contributing or providing thoughts to the picture, we've suggested that we meet. And however, that's been impossible to this point. To address Ms. Coffin, the neighborhood history is exactly why we are proposing the structure that we're proposing. The neighborhood has a long history of disinvestment from the city and from development interests and from landowners. And that is an opportunity we have to remedy. And I know that everyone on this call acknowledges the lack of public investment in this area, and we are providing a path to fix that. And while it can't fix everything, it makes significant strides in the right direction towards amending the historical inequity of this area. And as I've said before, this is an opportunity to go move from a history of racial injustice to a path of future equity. And that's the commitment and the goal and what everybody acknowledges that our plan can provide. And we are here saying it will provide it. And we are, are going through this process with that goal in mind, with that goal solely in mind. Because as I've said before, we don't have another plan. This is the plan that we think is the best for the community, and we've not heard of an alternative plan that, that was achievable, that was better. Then I was, um, the, to address Ms. Abrams on, we've, we have actually already committed that we will not develop in the floodway fringe, and we have, have added that as a condition. So it does, reflecting the SMAC proposed guidelines, it does allow for recreational uses in the floodway fringe to mirror the SMAC recommendation as directed by Planning Commission. And however, it does commit to not building in 50% of the fringe, but none of it. And then I want to hit on the community engagement piece last week. We keep getting asked for, for names, and I'm not sure, it, it's interesting that we're getting asked for, you know, getting accused of not engaging the community when there isn't anyone on this call who's directly from the community. And there isn't, and, and if there were, that would be a great indication to the council or to the, to the Planning Commission that we are deficient. If the neighborhood, if the immediately surrounding neighborhoods, neighbors were saying we were left out, then we'd have something to talk about. However, what we're hearing from folks all across the city, and I can quickly walk through our community engagement because I think it would be helpful to hear, and we can provide this in writing, however, to the Planning Commission if you all would like. But I'm going to, so we started with the ULI panel in August where 10 professionals came in from across the United States and spent five days interviewing community members. That includes neighbors and, and various stakeholders who have an interest in downtown South. The first neighborhood meeting was set on, on 2/7/20, and that meeting was held on 2/19/20. And to, in, in, in consistently city policy, we reached out to all the neighbors within 500 feet of the property and had 64 attendees at that meeting. On 7/3/20, we sent a notice of a stormwater town hall to address the, the folks who had expressed an interest in stormwater that we are still talking about today, certainly. And that meeting was held on 7/14/20, and there were 32 residents, 32 attendees at that meeting. We had a transit and traffic town hall, which we noticed on 9/2/20 and, and held on 9/10/20 with 45 attendees at that meeting that was open to the public. And on, then on 9/24/20, and we sent letters to everybody within 1,000 feet of the property and had over 100 attendees at that meeting on 10/5/20. We additionally have had surveys online using Neighborland, which did Dick's Parks Outreach from May until today. We'll keep that open and have had 2,200 participants. We've had stakeholder conversations throughout this time. And while none of our individual conversations, which are individual key components of citizen engagement, which number in the hundreds, if you, also if you think about Kane Realty Corporation and, and North Carolina Football Club are here in this community, and we are walking suggestion boxes, and the, the amount of connection and contact and discussion that have been had over this, around this project is truly immeasurable. But I can list out the, the representative groups that have been, that have been, that where there have been conversation and discussion. That I can list the groups, but I cannot list the individuals. That is not appropriate for us. None of those individual conversations were entered into the pretext of this becoming a public, a public conversation. And it would be entirely inappropriate for me to list individual names. However, I can list institutions, and they include many meetings with, with many of these organizations. One Wake, we were there at their, on their launch and part of their launch on their first day about a month ago of the launch of the organization. And we've had about four additional meetings with them. We've had multiple meetings with Partners for Environmental Justice. We've met with Southeast Raleigh Promise Project, the Walnut Creek Wetland Community Partnership, Shaw University, St. Augustine's University, Southwest CDC, Carolee Mills HOA, Passage Home, North Carolina DHHS, North Carolina DOT, Dick's Park Conservancy, Regional Transportation Alliance, RTA, Go Triangle, Visit Raleigh, Downtown Raleigh Alliance, Wake Up Wake County, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission, the, the, North Carolina NPO, the, of course, San Ambrose Church with Dr., with Dr. Taylor, and many, many more. There, and we can get that list to you if you'd like. So there have been deep connections with, and conversations, I mean, I can go, keep going, the Parks and Greenways Advisory Board, the, the North Carolina Clean Tech Center, the Community Smart Raleigh, Vernon Malone Center, College and Career Academy, Garner Road Community Center, Carolina Pines Community Center, South Raleigh Civitan Club, Faith Missionary Baptist Church, Biltmore Hills Community Park. We've had conversations throughout the community, and for folks who are not living in the community to come in and say that we have not, I think is, is inappropriate and inaccurate. So I am happy to respond further if there are any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bonner. I believe we have two folks from the public that would like to make additional comments, which I'll allow. I would ask that comments be new and not duplicative from previous.
So Bob, Geary wanted to provide some additional comments?
Oh, yes. Thank, thank you. I just wanted to say to Bonner, the granular discussion that you are promising to have, I think is completely appropriate, needs to happen, and should precede this rezoning case. That's what granular discussions are for, the list of groups that you went through just now, saying you have talked to them. Talking to a group is not the same as sitting down and conversing with them, hearing them, asking what they want in a project. If you've met with all of those groups, nothing they asked you for has made it into this application. That's my comment.
And Tanyana Height?
Yeah, I just wanted to address the comment that if people weren't feeling like they were being heard, why wouldn't they be at this meeting saying that? I want to point out that these meetings have been taking place during the business day, which is not accessible to many people. We have been having meetings with residents of the community after 7:00 PM and on Saturdays, and at times that are accessible to them, compiling their concerns and bringing them forward because some of us, such as my because um, some of us, such as myself and others, are are able to be here. And so we are coming and trying to be a mouthpiece for those who have indicated that they don't feel like they're being heard. Um, and again, we already heard there was there were hundreds of letters that have come in from people saying that that they had concerns and were not in support. So um, I think it's an unfair statement to say that they should be here saying that they don't feel like they've been included. Um, and also in regard to the community engagement comment that was just on the previous slide that listed PEJ, I just want to say the PEJ heard about this project in July and it did not come directly from the developer when we heard about that project. It came from other channels. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I think that's, are there any additional speakers in the public?
Yes, I would like to speak.
Okay, please go ahead.
This is Maria Spalding. I really appreciate the list that's been provided today by Mr. Bonner, Bonner. Um, and I'm sure that he has met with those groups. I am representing my church, which is Christian Faith Baptist Church. And that church is located on Hilltop Drive. Hilltop Drive is just off of Garner Road and uh, is parallel to Rush Street. We are adjacent to uh, Shinley Square, which is a trailer park, which I'm sure is probably going to be impacted. And more than likely, many of our properties that we own will also be impacted. I am a deacon at Christian Faith Baptist Church. And my church, I received the the information just, I'm not sure when I contacted the city, but it's only been about two weeks ago because it was uh, one of the meetings that's been held in the last three weeks had already taken place. And last week's meeting, I had problems getting connected. And of course, with the help of uh, Jason Harden, I was able to connect today. I live in technically Garner, North Carolina. My residence is less than one mile from the city limits off of Sandford Road. I participate and I'm the past chair of Southeast Raleigh Promise. I'm a board member of the A.J. Fletcher Foundation. And uh, I guess I've been the past president for over a year. This is the first time I have had, I, in the last three weeks, I received a communication from Livable Raleigh. It was an email. And it talked about this project. And I talked to our chairman of the board, who's also serving as moderator because we do not have a pastor at this time. We're in search. And we thought it might be a good idea that there be some representation at least in these three hearings that have been um, provided. Uh, I am very sorry that we have not been engaged. Uh, but I'm not familiar with our church being contacted. And I'm sure that our church, since it's just adjacent to Schenectady, to the trailer park off of uh, Hammond Road, is sure to be affected in some way, if nothing else but from traffic. Um, but I just felt like I needed to clarify for Mr. Bonner, why one of the apps, one of the people who is outside of the project is representing a established church, which is directly within the project area.
Thank you, Mrs. Spalding.
Thank you.
I believe that um, the applicant would like to respond.
Uh, and actually, I would mention we have one more request from a previous speaker to speak again.
Okay, thank you.
Carmen Coffin? I've unmuted.
Thank you, Jason. Um, I wasn't going to say anything. Um, when I first looked at the rezoning packet and I saw the list of names of people who lived within 500 feet of the the um, the development itself, I recognized several names of people that um, I have known over the years who live within the 500-foot radius. One of them has been in participation in the meetings that have been held, who lives in the Carol Lee Mills area. The other person um, that I reached out to has not heard anything um, and did not recall getting a neighborhood letter, although the family name was on the list and they live on the other side of Lake Wheeler Road um, in the area adjacent to, I believe it's called Parcel Beach. I have reached out personally to people who live in Rochester Heights. I have reached out to people who live all over the city about this project because while this project is going to specifically affect people who live within 500 feet of the area, it will also affect everybody else in this city. And so I think it is unfair to characterize people who are on the call who do not live in the 500-foot area or who do not live in downstream areas as people who will not be affected by this. If you are asking for TIG money or that process to be created, that will affect the tax dollars that I pay, just like everybody else in the city. And I got really annoyed when I heard that comment because it's patently unfair to say that because you have talked to an organization, an organization head, I don't know if you had meetings with people in those organizations, Zoom meetings, it's patently unfair to say that because you have talked to heads of organizations, that you have talked to the community. You talked to the heads of the organizations. And I know some of the heads of the organizations that you've talked to. And I know some of the people that you've talked to who you consider people who are leaders in the neighborhood. That's not the same as talking to my godmother, who lives in Rochester Heights, who just turned 88 this week, who doesn't know how to do a Zoom call or a Zoom meeting. And she only knows what she's read in the newspaper. It's not the same. And you should not expect it to be the same. And so I just needed to um, let you all know that one thing is not the same as the other. As Bonner has said in the past, it's comparing apples to oranges. And so I just want to thank you um, for hearing my angry comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coffin. Okay.
We have one more person who joined us and would like to speak, who has not spoken previously, that's Leon Cook.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm sorry I bumped off on my website, but just got back on, so I appreciate it. And I just heard the tail end of Carmen Coffin's comments. And I heard the beginning of Bob Geary's and nothing in between. By the way, I would at least like to express my concern on the speed that this project is going through. This project affects the entire city of Raleigh, not just the south side, the north, the east, and the west, and the city. So why are not more people involved with this project? It it doesn't make sense. Um, and as Carmen just mentioned, you're not talking to the people who are impacted by this. Heads of different organizations do not represent all of the people that live in these neighborhoods. So I think I behoove you to slow this stuff down. This is the biggest project in the city of Raleigh. Why steamroll it through without proper input from the people that are most impacted, as well as the people in the city of Raleigh, who are going to be paying the taxes to afford this sports center, recreation center, whatever you want to call it? Um, there are so many issues involved with this that I don't know how we can speed this through. There are so many issues. And um, as as Bonner mentioned earlier, um, the undeveloped parcel of the plan, why are we trying to rezon property, which is A and B, that don't have access to the BRT? It was one of your main contentions. In C, yes, it is supposedly. But why in A and B are we even considering rezoning those properties when there's nothing on the site plan of any sort as to what's going on there? The only thing I know is that you can't have a cemetery, an adult establishment, a jail, or vehicle repair shop. That's it. So I am just frustrated with the way the process is going. And I don't see how it can go before. Actually, I don't think January 11th is sufficient time, to be honest with you, to get all the input from the people who are involved. And that involves the people in the city of Raleigh. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. If that's the final um, speaker, we'll um, open it up to the applicant.
Uh, yes, thank you. Just um, addressing a few of those components. Uh, when I went through the list of organizations, I I did not state that it was the leaders of the organizations. There were uh, often multiple individuals from those organizations. And all of those meetings were sit downs that were uh, at least an hour. Uh, often multiple hours, multiple meetings. So just to clarify on that. Uh, and I would say further that I have repeatedly said that I and the team are willing to meet with anybody, anytime, anywhere. It can be at night, it can be on the weekends. We are open to that. And you all have hurriedly heard me made that assertion. And still, uh, the, I hear the same uh, statements that we're not meeting with people in the neighborhood, yet nobody has offered someone that we have not met with or that we need to meet with. That has not been suggested. However, we remain open to that. We, if there are groups that we have not met with, please let us know. We we truly desire to meet with them and help them understand what we're working on and how it will benefit the community. And so I reiterate that ask today and would welcome any connections that we have failed to make. Uh, further, there's going, this is is going to be a continued process. So there is a lot of opportunity for for folks to get engaged. And then, and then lastly, I think if maybe a different way of thinking about the success of our community engagement process, um, maybe not in the the uh, process metrics, but in the outcome metrics. And the community benefits that we identified through the citizen engagement process have persisted for months without a single suggested edit or addition or amendment of any sort. And so if our community engagement efforts were uh, were lacking, then the results would be lacking. If we didn't get the full picture, then we wouldn't be presenting the full picture. And the list of citizen engage or citizen engagement derived community benefits would be wrong, or we would have missed something. So if it, that may be a helpful way of of analyzing this. And and it is incredibly complex because uh, we're, all of these conversations uh, somehow end up because of the nature of, and it's our fault. It's it's the way that we've presented this because of the logistical challenges and and what um, what we're being forced to do because of the duration of review and all the components that have gone into this and the the TIA being big and getting hung up for almost three months. And there's a lot of reasons why we're we are here. Uh, but I'll say that if if we've gotten, nobody's saying that we've gotten any of this wrong. They're saying that uh, there's general questions around whether we've done sufficient engagement, to which we we have said we're welcome to it. What did we get wrong? Never heard anything about that. And uh, we're, we're happy to meet anytime. And we're always welcome when when new folks join the conversation. Um, we welcome that. It does take a while to help everyone understand the complexity of this, but we're focused on doing this for our community. And um, we want everyone to understand what we're trying to accomplish so that they can um, if they, if it's understood, then it it changes everything.
Thank you, Mr. Bonner. Um, I do have a question, a follow-up question. I think Tatiana Height uh, mentioned that that you had reached out to her or her group um, to set up a meeting. But you all have not actually met since over the past two weeks that we've been discussing this case. if if it's not possible, is that, were you trying to meet with Mr. Bass? Is that same group? And then if so, if you're not able to meet with him, perhaps there's somebody else in the organization that um, you would be able to speak with.
I'm sorry, is this question for me or for the developer?
It's for Mr. Heylord.
Uh, yes. Um, so as soon as we, we had been in conversation with Partners for Environmental Justice. And actually, that was a connection uh, that was initiated by our team. And uh, the the outreach didn't come directly from me or someone on my team, but the connection was made through our team. And we've had conversations, several meetings with Partners for Environmental Justice, uh, multiple meetings with One Wake. I've had individual discussions, multiple uh, robust conversations with uh, with Reverend Dr. Taylor. And uh, we have, we we continue to to remain open to further discussion. The first time we heard or learned about Chris Bass was when we saw his letter, which was submitted to you all. It was, it was not submitted to us. We let them know we would have been welcome to work with them for the month that, from our our prior meeting and our request for follow-up. And uh, there was a lot of time during there where there wasn't any communication. And then we received the letter, we saw the letter, when you all did, at the planning commission. And so we're, we're actively working to satisfy the request of that letter. And we do feel like we've got a solid direction uh, on how to uh, address the the overall questions that have been posed to us. I'll say that for the the stormwater piece, uh, I I just want to make sure and and know that, everyone know that he could not meet this week. And we are, we reached out to him immediately after and and look forward to to meeting with him. Um, but we learned about him at the same time that that you all did. And and I'll say that also, he, he's in the picture because uh, St. Ambrose Church, he's done uh, work for St. Ambrose Church. St. Ambrose Church is partner, part of Partners for Environmental Justice, Dr. Taylor. And uh, he's a leader at Partners for Environmental Justice and is a leader uh, with One Wake. And so Partners for Environmental Justice, uh, the One Wake and uh, Chris Bass and uh, Dr. Dr. Taylor are are uh, have all been uh, in conversation with various plug and play components of that, with Chris Bass being the last component that was just added.
Okay, thank you. Um, so now I would like to allow for questions and comments. I just wanted to reiterate that, you know, we've had a pretty robust discussion. Um, we've heard from, over the past two weeks, um, we've heard from staff, the applicant, the public. Um, we've received over 400 emails. And um, I think in all that communication, several common themes have come forward. Um, stormwater is one, transportation's another, and um, questions around the certainty in development, specifically like uh, specifics or conditions that would um, illustrate, you know, how much square footage would go in a location or what uses, height, specifics like that. So I just put out there that through further studies or additional conditions or our conversations here today, you know, potentially the planning commission can impact these areas that relate to the zoning specifically. And with that, I open up the floor. Are there any commissioners that have comments or questions and that has to be recognized?
I apologize for breaking the flow here, but I did want to let the commission know that there's one more speaker who in the last few minutes had not spoken before and would like to speak.
Would the commissioners like to hear from the public? I'm getting lots of yeses. Yes, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, Francis Williams.
Thank you so very much. I am Francis Lynette, well, if you know me as Lynette. I am a former chair of the Central Citizens Advisory Council and president of South Park International Association. I was interested in a comment that was made by Bonner because it was Bonner who called me and extended the invitation to talk with me. There would be people in my community who would be approaching me for my views about the project. And so he wanted to have an opportunity to share information with me about it. I explained to him that I didn't know very much about it. What I had learned was the little of Raleigh and articles that I had read that Carmen Carson had been posting, which has given me a lot of insight into it. So I'm a little bit confused about this comment about people making comments who actually live in the area, the zoning, when in fact that information on it. Do you live in the South Park? And I do see from what I've seen, that I am really going to be affected by it.
You're breaking up just a little bit. You are, but it's a little bit in and out. Go ahead. Sorry to interrupt you. We're having trouble hearing you. Can you try again? Ms. Williams, Ms. Williams, we cannot hear you. Could you email your comments or send us a chat? Or maybe try to hang up and reconnect? I can't make out what you're saying. I'm so sorry. Can you try to call back? No, it's very spotty. I'm sorry, you'll have to call back. Thank you so much. No, we can't hear you. Ms. Williams?
I will let you know if we get a better connection with Ms.
Mr. Harden, can you have her call in by phone? I would. I'm sorry, I think we just need to disconnect the call and have her call back in by phone and see if maybe you all can work it out on the technology end. I'm not sure what's going on. I'm so sorry for that, Ms. Williams. But we'd like to hear your comments and ask that you call back or email your comments or somehow get them to you. So we'll try to reserve some time to hear from Ms. Williams when she's able to connect better.
I will be working with her. Also, the applicant has indicated they would like to respond.
Okay. Mr. Gaylord, go ahead.
Yes, I hate that that connection didn't work. But I certainly did reach out to Ms. Williams and spent a good amount of time and a great conversation with her, updating her on the project and let her know that if she heard of anyone that would want to learn more, to let me know and we'd be happy to meet. And so that was the nature of those conversations. And I can get the date if I could find it on my phone when that call was, but it was a few weeks ago.
Sorry about that. Okay, thank you. So with that, I'd like to bring it back to the table. And when Ms. Williams is able to reconnect or send an email or somehow get her comments to us, we'll circle back around to that. Do commissioners have, I'm sure there's questions or comments, please be recognized to speak. Commissioner Fox.
I wanted to address the traffic, if we could. I'd ask maybe that the either staff or the applicant can refresh our memories of the results of what the traffic study said. And then I'd like to ask some specific questions of the applicant.
Yes, we have Travis Fluit, our traffic engineer, who can respond to that.
It took me a second to get unmuted. This is Jason Myers with the Department of Transportation for the city. So the traffic impact analysis was, first of all, done on a different entitlement than it's before you or at least is in the conditions today, I want to make that clear. And I believe that the review memo, the review done by Eric Lamb is in the agenda materials. But basically, what the TIA shows is that there is a very, very large amount of traffic projected from this development and that it would largely overwhelm the system and some of the intersections in the area at that level of entitlement. The applicant has, I think, suggested that some of the traffic that currently goes through South Saunders Street, which is North Carolina 50 and US 70, and also think 401, would be diverted kind of around the city in other ways. And that very well may be, there was an analysis to what the impacts in those locations would be. The applicant has also sent a, you know, a more informal analysis that we've looked at a little bit of reducing the entitlement in tracks A and B, which are the two that are on the west side of South Saunders Street, and what the results of that would be. And those still showed that infrastructure wouldn't be sufficient at the entire entitlement. Subsequent to that, they submitted conditions, I understand. And Mr. Clem can clarify the status of those conditions that would lower that entitlement even further. But we don't know what the results of that would be from a traffic impact perspective at this time. Is there a specific question about the TIA that I can answer for the commission?
Specifically, it was in reference to areas A and B. And if the overall result of the traffic impact analysis showing basically failure was related to those two specific areas or if it was just in general A, B, and C cumulatively.
You're asking if you took just C and let's say there was no entitlement change of A and B. I don't think I can answer that question clearly. I would expect there to be some impacts whether or not it would demonstrate infrastructure sufficiency or not. I honestly can't say because that analysis has not been done to my knowledge.
I'd like to hear if the applicant had any response to that.
Hello, can you hear me? Great, sorry. Took me a while for someone to unmute me. So Travis Fluit with Kinley Horn. As Jason said, we have not formed an updated analysis based on the new conditions. Exactly, we've done some preliminary analysis based on similar numbers. And everything does get significantly better, relatively better, with the reduced land uses on tracks A and B. There are still some issues, as Jason noted, just due to the significant amount of traffic on track C. But, and it kind of depends on the location where the tracks A and B outlet to the network, those got significantly better, but there are still some issues. And, you know, we will have to address those. As I mentioned last time, NC DOT has stated that they are going to require additional analyses be performed at the site plan stage. Once we have a better idea of the specific uses that are becoming online and how the sites will be accessed. That's something we will have to continue to study closely and analyze. And kind of part of the issue right now is that we were obviously hamstrung by the COVID conditions with school closures and work closures. We weren't able to get updated traffic counts at all of the locations that we would have liked to before, you know, school let out and people stayed home from work. So hopefully by the time we're in site plan, that will have been resolved and things will be a little more back to normal. And we'll be able to study these with a little more accurate data. Is that, is your question or there are other things I can elaborate on?
Well, I'm also wondering if part of the issue is related to the lack of a development of an internal street grid on A and B specifically. Can you speak to that?
Yes, that has been an issue. It is definitely a challenge with both of those sites. They're kind of on an island. We've been looking and talking with the team about ways to get additional access to those parcels. But, you know, since we are only in rezoning, we can't commit to any of those access points if they cross through other adjacent properties. So at this point, we're kind of forced to study everything with the access that we control. But I think the intention is that in the future, as, you know, we're going to be limited by what we can do unless we can get additional access to those parcels.
And this is a question for Mr. Gaylord, I believe. Is the applicant considering additional conditions to address the traffic impacts?
That was a question for Bonner, right?
Okay, here we go. Yes. So we have offered to the conditions number seven and eight, which restrict development on the parcels to 400,000 square feet of office and 25,000 square feet of retail and 500 residential units on the northern parcel. And then 50,000 square feet of office, 50,000 square feet of retail, and 900 residential dwelling units on the southern parcel, that's parcel B right there. And we feel that that significantly addresses what we heard from Eric Lamb, which is that A and B are the issues and C is okay because of the grid network. And we know that we are going to have to meet additional conditions at the site plan with NC DOT and Raleigh DOT.
So to clarify, if I may, you are essentially pumping to the site plan review process to address those. Is that an accurate statement?
Yes, I guess so. That we would not want to make any commitments now that would preclude the future commitments that the site plan analysis will require.
I have a follow up question. If potentially the development permitted on the site is different than the zoning request based on traffic analysis? And, you know, because the city's level of service standards for traffic congestion will ultimately govern the amount of development that's permitted and also what mitigations would be appropriate for any traffic issues? It seems like a traffic study or more information on specifics about how traffic would be handled would give us a better understanding of the development potential and additionally inform adjacent communities in a specific way that's understandable to them about what the impact of the development would be on their communities. And so without that information, I wonder how that can be achieved. And I would be looking for some sort of specifics to address that.
I'll address that to the extent I can. Some of the big challenges that we faced with this, as I mentioned, the COVID conditions and the availability of accurate and current traffic information, traffic data, but then other conditions like, you know, BRT. And is that going to be in place, you know, by the time that this is substantially developed? You know, when we get to our first site plan, you know, how close is BRT? Is it, you know, a year off? Is it still five years off? That information will help inform how much traffic will be coming to the site via, you know, personal vehicle versus bus and transit options. Bonner mentioned that we've been in coordination with the Regional Transportation Alliance, RTA. We met with them, they're doing this FAST study. But even prior to this development being proposed, had identified the South Saunders I-40 interchange in this area as a key and critical location for some sort of transit hub. Maybe hub's not the right word, but some sort of transit connectivity connecting BRT to, you know, more regional routes. And the things like that will really determine and impact how many personal vehicles are coming to this site and what the impacts are. So we have challenges when looking at, you know, how much can we develop on this site and meet the city's thresholds based on the information we've got? And as we've seen with North Hills at Six Forks is, you know, even based on our, the traffic study that we did for North Hills East, you know, 15 years ago, traffic conditions have not been nearly as bad on Six Forks Road as we projected in that study because of the changes in traffic patterns. People on Six Forks Road taking alternate modes, taking alternate routes, traveling at different times a day because of the additional traffic from the North Hills development. development. And that's what we tried to capture in the diversion of traffic off of South Saunders that the city was talking about. But those are those numbers have been hard to quantify. So Bonner, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I think you've, well, there's, there's just a lot that would will determine what our commitments to make sure the traffic functions well. And we will be able to make those commitments with more information and at the site plan.
This is Jason Myers with the city. I'd like to address that comment as well, Commissioner Hicks, or that question. There are two, the way I look at it, there's two different types of impacts to to the system than the T that the TIA can and does describe. One of them is the love vehicle level of service at intersections and how much delay we would project and, you know, how much congestion there might be. Another impact is the proposed mitigations and what that does to the form of the streets and the intersections in the area. And and part of what I think needs to be, you know, I guess, considered and thought about is that while the applicant is not necessarily offering conditions to require those mitigations, I don't think that they should necessarily because of NC DOT requirements and flexibility and expecting that conditions change. You can kind of get a sense of what sort of changes they would expect to make when they submit a revised TA at site plan and what sort of changes to the network NC DOT would expect to have. And those are turning intersections into triple or I think in double and triple lefts and adding extra turn lanes and making intersections and limiting access in some cases. And I don't want to try to read off all of those. They're in the TIA review memo in the backup materials. But that's something that that should be considered. It's not just that there's additional traffic and that some people may take different routes and divert their trips. Those things we do expect. It's also what changes to the network would would likely come out of there being site plans built at this sort of entitlement. And and that information is in there. I would also add that, given the reduction in the entitlement in that condition, to really know what the impact of that is to traffic and to those recommendations, there would really need to be a revision of that TIA analysis or an addendum. And that doesn't necessarily take a huge amount of time to do or to 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 review, but it certainly would add additional time to this process that it'd be at the commission's discretion if we we needed to see that. So we have a different level of entitlement in the case now. So we can't really say with any certainty what the impacts of that would be.
Thank you. I'm told that I'm told that Ms. Williams is back on the line. So I hate to drop up jump off of this topic, but I'd like to hear her comments if she's able to connect with us.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. I am Lonnie Williams. Francis is my first name, which I hardly use, but most of you remember me from having been chair of the Central Citizens' Advisory Council for about seven years. And I'm still the president of the South Park East Waltz Association. I'm responding to Bonner's comments about people making comments today who don't actually reside. I was a person in the community that people would come to for advisement about the project. And so he wanted to share that with me. He knows exactly where I live, and I don't live within 500 feet or 1,000 feet of the proposed site. And I don't think that that's important anyway, because anybody who lives in the city of Raleigh is going to be affected by this project one way or another. I learned about the project by reading Little Baroli as well as articles that Carmen Coffin had been publishing on Facebook, which helped to acquaint me with. And this is what I shared with Bonner. And then he was able to provide me with additional information. I am still reviewing a lot of this stuff because it's an awesome amount of stuff to review. But having been a CAC chair and been involved in rezoning cases, I found this one to be quite different. And it looked more like a planned development more so than a rezoning application, which is why the process so many problems for me and other people who couldn't fully grasp all the things that were not there that we thought we should be able to see. So I think that the confusion here with the community engagement is that the people who are going to be affected by have not been given due notice, through a process that they could fully understand and be able to ask questions. And that dates back to when the city did the Southern Gateway Study. Because much of it was in District D, the people in Urban Design Center at that time who were responsible for that project didn't feel it was appropriate to invite people from Southeast Raleigh to be involved in that process so they could get some orientation to that area of the city. We use that area of the city almost daily. I'm driving down South Saunders, South Wilmington Street, just about three or four days a week, because that's where a lot of the distance services are that those of us who live in Southeast Raleigh enjoy and spend our money. So in addition to that, here we got this project coming up again, limiting its contact with people who live in Southeast Raleigh who have physical addresses of Southeast Raleigh and are following that same process. The process that I'm seeing that has been a problem is that they draw lines around areas of the city and say that because you live on the left side of this line, you shouldn't know about it. They don't know how to communicate with people who live beyond the boundary of a particular area that they want to rezon without understanding it has implications for people who live far beyond where those boundaries are. So I just wanted to make a comment that Bonner was contradicting himself when he was the one who approached me to discuss the downtown south project so that I could be informed enough to help explain to people who may be more closely affected than I would be to share information about it. So I just wanted to bring that to Bonner's attention, that it was he who called me to talk to me about and share that information, knowing full well that I did not live in that area and that it's appropriate, I believe, for anybody who wants, on behalf of people who are not technologically savvy, to get all these calls. Look, I got kicked off three times today. To be able to participate in many, many people cannot do. And so as a community, we need to be available to help people across the city. Thank you for allowing me to share my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. And thank you for trying multiple times. We appreciate that effort.
I was a mess.
Commissioner Fox, and I just before you speak, I just want to point out it's almost five o'clock. So sometime, oh, I just got a note that Stormwater staff has arrived. So I if if your question can wait, Commissioner Fox, or do you want to?
Very quick one.
Okay, go ahead.
I wanted to ask the applicant if they could address one of Ms. Williams' comments as the applicant considered reworking this case and submitting it as a PD?
Yes, that has been considered. That is not something that would work logistically due to the duration of a PD process. And and also, I'd like to to say that I reached out to Mrs. Williams because it was suggested to me that she would want to know about the project. And so every name that's been given, suggested to me, I've I've endeavored to reach out to them and connect. And so I don't think that's inconsistent with what I've said before. It's entirely consistent with what I've been saying.
Thank you. I have a follow up question. If you if you wouldn't be willing to consider a PD, would you be willing to consider just rezoning Phase C, which has more conditions and detail to it versus A and B, which is fairly unknown?
We need to move these projects through together. And I understand the request and I understand the basis for the request. However, that's not something that we could commit to.
Okay, thank you. And so I think now we will hear from Stormwater staff. And I just want to say thank you for coming to our meeting a little bit late. We appreciate you making the time to be here tonight.
Sorry, I was hitting the wrong button. Hey, this is Ben Brown from the Stormwater Management Staff. And I am more than happy to just be in WebEx meetings for most of my day today. Anyway, not much of a full blown presentation, just just more of a discussion of where the study stands. And I included a backup memo that's going to go over essentially the same things that that I'm going to talk about here, but I'm willing to take any questions too about that as well. So did get comments back to the applicant on their initial submittal of the downstream analysis and the the issues, the main issues that the staff has as at this point or data needs is basically all their input and output data from their modeling. Also, to look at additional analysis points at specifically at the Rose Lane Crossing Walnut Creek and also near the Rochester Heights neighborhood where there's a tributary that kind of runs into Walnut Creek there. And also wanted to get a they did a very thorough analysis of the hundred year storm event and Stormwater staff would like to see that with the lower storm events as well, not just through the hundred year. So with the two year, 10 year, 50 year storm events as well, and just kind of to see what the flooding looks like with this with this development downstream with the lower year storm as well, and not just the hundred year hurricane level of that sort of storms. That was essentially it and offered up some any Stormwater info, any Stormwater staff info that we had for them. And the applicants have been in touch with us about getting some of that info specifically about the Rose Lane Crossing because staff does have a current project going on now that we are specifically looking at the Rose Lane Crossing. So 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 I know the applicant is working on getting our comments addressed and getting it back to us. And also of note, and I'm not sure if Matthew had shared this or not, but Stormwater staff had asked for a rewording of the applicant's GSI condition. And we sent that wording back to Matthew yesterday. And I assume he sent that to the applicant. So basically, to be a little more specific about the GSI condition.
Yeah, hey, this is Matt in city planning. Yeah, I just will confirm that we did share those comments then with the applicant a few days back when we got them from you. So they are in receipt of the Stormwater staff's recommended revisions.
Perfect. I had I had I had heard back about the announced comments. I hadn't heard back about the condition comments. I just wanted to verify. So if anyone has any questions for me?
Thank you. Commissioner Fox, I know, I think you had some follow up questions on transportation, but since we're on storm, okay. Do any commissioners have questions or comments for Stormwater? Commissioner Tommasulo?
Yes, thanks. I guess I this is kind of just quick because unfortunately, I have to get off for work. But I did kind of just want to give just a few thoughts before I headed out. You know, it's this is a big project and we've had so many conversations around it. So I'll keep it short. But, you know, I for me, it's like, I'm conflicted with what the cart and what the horse is when it comes to the bus rapid transit and, you know, projections of investment in an area, particularly around a TOD station. We've been working on BRT for 20 plus years, I believe. And and that's that's just a question that I have for context of this project. And I guess it's hard for me to consider traffic, both amidst what's going on right now, but also also what is what the implications are of it being a BRT stop as well. The as far as Stormwater, I'm really glad to see that a lot of work is being done and a lot of the commitments beyond beyond what would be required at site plan to are being offered and that a lot of the the expected requests and requirements are also being met. I do still feel like I have concerns around just kind of the engagement process. We're seeing that there was a lot of holes, et cetera. And honestly, I it really does make me think that I don't necessarily think it's our role to change mid project, but it does make me think that we have a lot of other policy work to do, particularly on larger projects in the future. And and, you know, like, for me, it's, I don't necessarily think it's a PD would sell this now, but I do think in the future, large product that we really have to seriously talk about what scale at what scale requires a PD. And yeah, I think that that's everything. I have other other comments and stuff, but I just kind of wanted to to get that out before I head out. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Tommasulo. And sorry, you have to leave us a little early, but we understand. Other questions or comments on Stormwater for Commissioner Bennett?
My comments aren't just on Stormwater. So if you're just doing Stormwater, I'll defer to someone else who might have a specific Stormwater question.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lampman?
I'm just going to kind of point out for the record that we don't have enough information from Stormwater. I don't think that they have the documents that they need or the data that they need to complete their analysis. So I would deem this an incomplete submission for the planning commission.
Yep, I had a question for Stormwater staff. Just looking over this, some of the four items that were asked for more information that I guess applicants currently working on, some of them were questions I feel like I had. And I'm not a Stormwater expert by any means. And so my question is, you know, are are these four requests kind of baseline information? Or are these related to the fact that this is a special, you know, site, special condition?
I think specifically the analysis points, that's kind of special of what we know about flooding in that area. That's why the Stormwater staff kind of asked for those additional analysis points. Overall, from like an engineering standpoint, it appears that it's a fairly solid study. It's just, I would like to see a little more detail kind of drilled homes to where this might be affecting specific properties and things like that and and areas of known concerns.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lampman?
So and Ben, I appreciate all the work that you've done. I just want to make sure that you have the time that you need because I know that that was a big request from last week as well. I appreciated your additional thoughts about the two year, five year and the timelines of the of the flood studies. You know, do a complete review of this. How much more time would you need? You know, do a complete review of this. How much more time would you need?
Assuming, sorry, assuming we could get, get it back to us. I mean, Stormwater staff can commit to doing, doing, to turn that review around in probably four business days.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Oh, Commissioner Lampman, go ahead.
So Ben, do you think that from that analysis, it sounds like you already have an update to the concession or sorry, the condition for the GSI, but do you, there's possibility that your review could yield to additional conditions, you feel? Possibly?
It's possible, yes.
Thank you.
Is it also possible to provide conditions to address like containment and poundment treatment to mitigate the impacts, but in a general way so that it could be done prior to all of the studies being done? Are those conditions that could be added without kind of cornering the applicant? Who specifically?
Yeah, I know on, on other rezoning cases there, there is, there has been some mitigation conditions listed that if, if the results of a downstream analysis show an increase in these certain storms, then you could require the developer to mitigate those increases on-site.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, Stormwater questions from commissioners before Commissioner Bennett makes her comment? Being none, Commissioner Bennett?
Thank you. So I've been writing a bunch of notes, trying to be concise and brief and to the point. So if I'm getting my notes right, it sounds like with regard to traffic and transportation, Jason was saying they would need to do additional analysis to understand the impact of the revisions I think that the applicant has made. Stormwater is waiting on, I guess, the response to their comments, so we can't really do anything with that. The equitable development around transit is yet to be adopted. Can't really do anything about that. So what are we as a planning commission supposed to do with this rezoning? I appreciate the position that the applicant is in and I've learned a little bit more about the timeline and everything and, and I appreciate that position. But I appreciate the position that the community is in wanting to understand what's going to happen to them. I know the rezoning is not designed to answer all of those questions, but it will at least give them an idea of we're rezoning this for this, you can kind of expect this and you'll learn more once there's a site plan. I don't feel like we can give them that because I don't feel like we have that. So I'm, I'm not sure what we're supposed to do. That's really like my first comment. My second comment is I listened to all of the back and forth about the community engagement and I'm really, I'm glad that we're having this process where we can listen to the community, where the applicant is right there to respond and they can sort of have a little bit of back and forth and that's really helpful for me. And I hear Bonner saying he has engaged over a lengthy time period. I saw the list of, of groups and organizations that he has engaged with. So I'm not here to say he hasn't done what he said he is doing. But I also hear people saying, but we didn't know about the project. And we're in the impact area, whether it's direct impact, whether it's indirect impact, we didn't hear about it. I understand there's no way to possibly let everybody in Raleigh know about the project. However, if it's the biggest project that Raleigh has ever seen, maybe there needs to be a massive effort to notify as many people in Raleigh as possible. I also don't think while it is technically meeting the requirement to notice people within 500 feet or 1,000 feet, I think this project requires more. And I don't think to I don't, I was kind of struck by the comment that the people on the phone or the people commenting weren't people in the community. How do we define community? Is it just those people within the 500-foot or 1,000-foot radius? I don't think that's a community. Those are just people adjacent to the parcels. So that kind of struck me a little bit. And I'm also hearing Bonner say, I'm here, I'm willing to sit down and meet with anybody. So-and-so told me to meet with this person, so I met with that person because I thought they were a good community representative. That's great. And I'm not minimizing that. However, as someone who's done these types of projects for a long time, I understand it's not the community's responsibility to tell you to meet with them. It's not the community's responsibility to tell you how to meet with them. It's your responsibility to go out there and figure it out. It's your responsibility to be proactive, not reactive. I met with so-and-so because so-and-so told me to meet with so-and-so. This person told me I should meet with this person. Sure, that's all part of the networking and that helps you get out there, but you have to have a comprehensive, proactive engagement plan where you're just out there, where they see you or your group, your, your team all the time. And you're not necessarily just having these one-on-one coffee shop meetings where, you know, you say I, I can't give those names. I don't feel comfortable giving those names. Your community engagement process is supposed to be a public process. So if you have a meeting and 200 people attend, you should be able to release the name of those 200 people who attended. If you're having private meetings, then that's not community engagement. So I, I, I had to speak to that because while what you have been doing may have been engaging many, many people in the community, it may not have been engaging the community. And we've been getting emails from people saying, this is the first I've heard about this. We've been getting emails from organizations saying, this is the first we've heard about this. We asked this, we didn't get a response. We wanted a meeting, we couldn't get a meeting. And so the rezoning process has become the de facto community engagement process. That's not how it should be. But since we've set it up to be that way, then I want it to be that way. If we have to be the community engagement process for this because we've been put in the position, then I am here until the community has been engaged in the way it needs to be engaged. If we're sitting here until January, February, March, April, May, if that's what it takes for the community to feel like they've been heard because they don't feel like they're being heard, then that's what I'm here for. I recognize that's not the job of the planning commission. I understand that's not the job, the responsibility of the rezoning process. That's the position we've been put in. We're the community engagement. I believe Bonner actually said at the last meeting at one point, when someone commented that we haven't had any community engagement, I think he said something like, well, this is the community engagement. Then, okay, let's do it. This is the community engagement. Let's have a meeting where it's just three hours of people talking and we don't say anything and the applicant doesn't present and the city doesn't present and we just let the community come and we let them talk. Whether or not we vote to up, down, or nothing, the community has been engaged, they feel like they've been heard and they feel like they've been listened to. Because we keep saying and we keep hearing, this is the largest development coming to Raleigh. This is going to transform not just South Raleigh, all of Raleigh. So what are we doing? I'm not going to commit to rushing through this process. I respect that the applicant has a deadline. I truly do. But everyone knew the applicant had this deadline when we got this in October. The largest development in the history of Raleigh was given to us in October. And then I see this memo from the city manager saying, and the planning commission has been asked to make a decision by November 10th. Really? We have single parcel rezonings that we listened to for three and four meetings. This is 150 acres and we're supposed to turn it around in a month? I'm sorry, I'm not going to commit to doing that. I'm going to listen to the community as long as they want me to. I'm going to continue to ask for information until I feel like I can make an intelligent decision, whether it's yes or no, at least I feel like I have the information. I feel like the applicant feels like they've had enough opportunity to give us what we need and the community has had an opportunity to tell us what we need to know. And we can deliberate and make an intelligent decision. Because as we keep being told, this is the largest project in the history of the city of Raleigh. Therefore, it needs to be handled differently than your typical project because it's not a typical project. I, I think that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bennett. Commissioner Fox?
I wanted to support what Commissioner Bennett just said. I and I might offer a counter-approach because I do feel like I do feel like we need to hit the pause button and, and actually maybe rewind and start over. And I'll tell, I'll tell you why. I've, what I, what I've heard and what I have from my notes is there's an interest in punting to the site plan to address all the traffic concerns. There's not an interest in submitting this as a PD and I have serious concerns about the engagement to date. But to that effect, I, I would move that we recommend denial of rezoning Z1320 as it's not reasonable and in the public interest in its current form. Public interest in this case I defined as what the community has defined it as. Dealing with, with environmental justice and systemic downstream flooding, providing affordable housing near transit stops, providing workforce development and local hiring, providing community input on project design and community-oriented services and amenities like youth programs, minority-owned business, incubator space, space for community meetings, grocery stores, and employment centers, among others. Furthermore, for the project to be deemed approvable in the future, the following would need to be addressed. Additional stormwater measures perhaps as proposed by staff this evening and have been discussed with the applicant offline. I'm also going to propose that there's a reduction of height specifically on Area C adjacent to the transit stop to the 20 stories at the core and five stories in the transitional zone to address the E-DAT guidelines. We also need additional detail of traffic impacts and proposals to address them and additional inclusive and participatory public engagement, which although we cannot require, I would hope may result in a meaningful, meaningfully developed community benefits agreement in addition to the tax increment grant. That was long, I apologize.
Thank you, Commissioner Fox. Commissioner Winters?
Thank you. I first of all want to support what Commissioner Bennett said. Wonderfully stated. And to Commissioner Fox, I do understand what you're saying, but it's in the, in your very comments where you said that additional information was needed, which is why I think we need to hold this here to get that additional information. Because moving it out, I'm not, I'm not comfortable moving it out without that information. And though I understand it being listed as a condition, many conditions have been unmet. Comments have been unmet and I'm not comfortable moving it forward with that track record on this case specifically. So I move that we hold this case until we have the additional information as outlined by Chair Hicks as well as Ms. Fox and as well as with the community engagement piece with Ms. Bennett, as Ms. Bennett stated, that we need to hold this case until the information has been provided because there's, there are too many unknowns. Thank you.
So Commissioner Fox, did you state your comments in the form of a motion?
Yes, I did, Chair.
So we can't have two motions simultaneously at, at the same time, sorry.
Okay, I, forgive me, I apologize. I thought it was more sort of a comment of, so I will reserve.
Thank you, thank you. So with the motion on the table, I would entertain a second. Commissioner Miller?
Yeah, I had some comments too and I wanted to be brief, but the first is that sort of high level. I, I want this project generally to succeed. Obviously, the devil is in the detail. I'm excited about this project specifically in this area. I was moved by the comments from speakers regarding the historical inequities and especially the racial inequities and repressive policies that led to the problems in this area. And so I wanted to thank Ms. Balding and Ms. Williams and Ms. Height and Mr. Geary for, for addressing those issues because I think it's, it's critical to this piece. For some of those speakers, I know some of you only by reputation for your leadership in the community, but and Ms. Balding and I have known each other and discussed and worked together in the past to address some community development challenges in southeast Raleigh and in, in historically under-invested areas of Raleigh. And one of the things that we talked about was the problems with traditional economic development tools as applied in southeast and south Raleigh and in this area. Typically on economic development, economic development policies and tools, you know, you might relocate a business into one of these areas. However, the jobs that those businesses bring, those jobs are not going to people that live in that neighborhood. And it's going to increase property values in addition and lead to additional displacement and gentrification in that area. And it's a big conundrum on what do you do around economic and community development in this area. So personally, when I looked at this type of TIG, tax increment grant agreement and the additional funding that it could provide specifically around affordable housing and workforce development in the area and that they could bind the development and the, the or create agreements with the companies and the developments in that area around minority hiring thresholds and green stormwater infrastructure and the really unique and innovative way that this type of tool could be used to revitalize this area. It was a giant aha moment. And so personally, I, you know, I, I want to be supportive of this project and move it forward. And I really appreciate that, you know, we have received 400-plus emailed comments and that the vast majority of those comments are also supportive of this plan as long as certain items are met and addressed. And so sort of high level, I think that if, if this is done properly, it can be an incredible thing for the communities of this area that have been historically underrepresented and disinvested and could actually revitalize these areas without displacement and with providing jobs to the actual people in that area. And that is just such a challenging thing when you work in economic and community development to try to provide. So, but all that being said, there has been a lot of confusion and a lot of sort of clumsy process around both the community engagement and the required community benefit piece. And I've shared a lot of this confusion. So on the first one, on the community benefit side, on our first meeting, Mr. Geary made the comment that the community benefits, including the affordable housing and other concepts that the applicant laid out were spectacular, but none of those were items listed in the conditions of the zoning. And that, you know, essentially sums up my concerns as well. And you know, one way we, that it, as the zoning application currently exists, a lot of those requirements cannot be, cannot, necessarily cannot be included in this as part of the conditions. It would need to be, excuse me, part of a plan development or something else and, or part of or something else and, or part of the community benefits agreement that we don't get to vet. And then the second issue has been related to the community engagement. And as, um, folks have stated, we clearly need a well organized thoughtful process. And for the current notice and community engagement process that's required by the city for a project like this is woefully insufficient for a project this size. And that has also been part of the challenge that while the, um, applicant has undertaken the steps required by the city and some in addition, that it's still, that, that it hasn't been enough. So, um, all that being said, we learned yesterday from council that they have, they provided us just yesterday, a lot more insight into the process for both the community benefits requirements and to make those binding and then also the community engagement strategy. So, um, on the community engagement side, the city, um, laid out and directed staff to lay out a plan, um, starting in January for the next at least six months. It sounded like it could be longer than that to, um, appoint committees from the private sector that represent private sector community leaders. And I would strongly suggest that all of the, um, speakers today focused on this topic might consider applying and hopefully if they're interested, absolutely be engaged in that process. Um, and that, that would, and that staff is actually designing an incredibly robust community engagement process specifically around this project because it is such a unique animal. So staff is going to take a month or two to develop what that process is going to look like. And then that's going to be undertaken for the next six plus months. So that the applicant is not just trying to figure it out sort of on its own, but it's actually going to be required and, and guided by the city. And then in terms of the second item, on the community benefit side, um, we got the MOU for the, um, TIG agreement, which is also the community benefits agreement, um, after our last meeting. And we looked at, and, and staff yesterday was also, um, tasked with outlining what all of the business terms would be and, um, also discussing what those would be. So specifically, once the fund is created, what the applicant, what the owner would have to develop, would have to spend it on. Um, so, and that, the specifics of that would be set forth in the community benefits agreement. So that would include the affordable housing, the green stormwater infrastructure, the parks and greenways, the transportation infrastructure development, um, including the transit amenities and bicycle and pedestrian facilities they're required to provide to the surrounding neighborhoods, the workforce development programs, for, excuse me, for the neighbors, um, the public arts and cultural attractions representing, uh, the history of this area, the educational partnerships with the, um, community and surrounding neighbors, health facilities, and also the sports and entertainment venue to sort of be an economic hub that makes the, that and generates, um, that is the draw that generates the tax dollars that, uh, or grant dollars that allow the rest of this to happen. Um, and so with a better understanding that that's actually, that all of those itemized pieces are going to be set forth in that TIG agreement that's going to be negotiated over the course of six plus months with a committee of community leaders. Um, to me, it, you know, we only found that out yesterday. And I feel like part of the challenge in the planning commission process is if we had known that on the front end, that would have clarified a lot of things for us because, um, we've spent a lot of time these last couple of meetings not understanding what the process looks like and being very concerned. We don't know what community engagement looks like or will look like around this. We don't know how to bind the developer to these community benefits. Um, so now that we just learned that yesterday and we understand it, that gives me more faith in, um, the process and that we are addressing a lot of the issues from the general public. Uh, but all that being said, I look back at what is, what can we do from a planning commission standpoint and what is our role? And we, as a planning commission, our job is to provide recommendations around zoning. Um, well, as this project stands, you know, these are incredibly, um, that, you know, these are rezoned, proposed rezonings for this, um, district. It's, again, it's a cart before the horse kind of thing because with this type of immense development in the area, I'm very concerned that it's not going to protect that the surrounding neighborhoods that could be used as a traditional economic development tool to bring in companies, um, that don't provide jobs in the area and to displace residents and lead to additional gentrification that we've seen with some of the traditional, um, economic development policies and practices, um, in, in some of these areas in the past. And so I am comfortable approving this if that TIG agreement is in place and if the community benefits and community engagement is in place. However, at this point, we can't, um, that is laid out for next year. And so how can we approve this rezoning without that being part and parcel to that? Um, and I know I've discussed, you know, we could approve this with recommendations that it should only be, we're approving it, but we need to have these community benefits, um, and community engagement strategy. Um, but I'm not sure, you know, as, as I've just said with some of you, I'm not sure that sends a strong enough message um, to the council. Instead, if we, um, support denying this project with the following reasons, I think that sends a much stronger message about how critical these individual pieces are. And the more we can lay out, uh, what those critical steps we think council needs to take next year in our reasons, the more that we can sort of inform that process, um, as it goes on next year. So that is a extremely long way of saying that, um, the motion that Commissioner, uh, Fox made, I, I, um, second sort of tentatively because I would love to approve this project. But, um, for the reasons stated, I just don't think that there's a way for us to have enough. We don't have the tools to have enough comfort on this project, um, without, um, just as the process is currently laid out for, for a product of this size. So all that being said, I, um, second, uh, Commissioner Fox's motion for those reasons.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. Um, I think Commissioner Winters had her hand up first. Okay, are you giving it to Michelle?
No, no, I got it. I just didn't get it, but my babe, okay. So, um, Blaney, thank you for your comments. They, I, I appreciate everything you've said. Um, well, what I find very interesting is people keep trying to remind us what their jobs are as commissioners, although I'm well aware of it. Uh, my point is with what is in our control is the, is, as we're talking about rezoning, we're talking about having, um, insufficient stormwater information, traffic, transit, the things that we've, we've already discussed, that is within our control. I am as, um, concerned about the other aspects, meaning TIG, the, the TIG and the benefits agreement. I am, uh, concerned about that as well. But as I am aware as a commissioner, that is outside of my control. Um, but we are responsible, but, but one is layered upon another. And that's where, um, like the community benefits agreement is, is based on like with the stormwater. Again, that was, that which is in our control. So thank you so much for your comments and, and others who, um, said, who, who have shared. But, um, I stand with my comments before. I just wanted to address that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Winters. Commissioner McIntosh.
Um, I just wanted to say that I support Commissioner Bennett. I appreciate Commissioner Fox's, um, detailed motion and Commissioner Miller's comments. But I think it's really, I think Commissioner Bennett's comments were really important. I think the community needs to have input. I'm not confident that there's going to be space for the community to have as much input after planning commissions voted on it as they would within planning commission. And as the, as the financial mechanisms are described now, what I'm hearing is a very top down approach. It doesn't sound community based to me. And I think it's especially important, it's a, I would hope that all of our developments in Raleigh would incorporate community input, but I think this particular area, it's especially important because of historic implications of this development. And I don't know if there's a way procedurally to not have to vote on this today. I'm very uncomfortable voting on it today. And I will just say, I, I, if I could, um, you know, during the applicant's representative's, um, presentation, October 23rd, he talked about, um, in, in relation to the flooding in Southeast Raleigh, in South Raleigh, he talked about, um, the culverts that were built a long time ago and these bathtubs that were developed. And I just want to point out, it was white people in Raleigh who put those culverts in place. It was white people in Raleigh who built those bathtubs. We built those bathtubs when we put the 440 belt line through and we put a wall up against the existing Rochester Heights neighborhood. White people in Raleigh exacerbated flooding in Southeast Raleigh. And, and going back further, white people in Raleigh are the ones that pushed black people into Southeast Raleigh. We're the ones who segregated Raleigh. And we are the ones now who have a choice of how Raleigh is going to develop, um, from this point forward. And I think listening to the community that's been in Southeast Raleigh for generations and what they would like to see happen in that area is important. And I don't feel comfortable, um, denying them that opportunity, especially when we have thoughtful, professional input we've been given by Partners for Environmental Justice, by the Southeast Raleigh Community Organization that Carmen Coffin is working with, trying to ensure this development has benefits for this area of town, that it is truly an equitable development that engages the real community that lives here. And, um, I, I just, I feel like that's so important. And the structures I'm hearing about in the application don't sound to me like they are necessarily going to support that, um, the way they're currently written. And I'm uncomfortable voting right now.
Um, so if, um, we were to take a vote and the motion doesn't pass, um, we could then entertain another motion or decide to hold it at the table or whatever. But what, what, uh, when would we meet next? And also what would we specifically be, um, holding our discussion to cover the next time that we would speak on, on this case? Commissioner McIntosh.
Can I just, the reason I'm uncomfortable voting is if I vote against the motion, I'm voting it out of planning commission. My only, my only alternative is to vote for the application. And I do not feel comfortable voting for the application at this time. Um, I think the next meeting could be input from the community as Commissioner Bennett suggested. Maybe we sit here for five hours listening to input from the community.
Thank you for that note. Okay. Um, Commissioner Fox, did you have your hand up?
I, I was gonna, I was gonna say that the intent here is to not cut the community engagement short. It's, it's to force a resubmit so you have time for more meaningful community engagement. Meaning, I really do think people need to do the community engagement before they get in the door. Relying on us to do the heavy lift for them is inappropriate. It's unfortunate that 2020 is a giant dumpster fire, but it is. Um, and I just, and, and what I mean by that is, it's not about this project. I mean, we're, we're all forced to be on WebEx and Zoom and it is unfortunate. Um, but I will, I, I know procedurally you have a motion in a second, but, um, seeing the amount of discomfort with moving forward with that, I will, I'll just rescind at this point. I can rescind the motion. Um, however, I am struggling to figure out with the next, um, what the next point of discussion might be, what, what additional conditions that the applicant might offer.
Thank you, Commissioner Fox. Um, Commissioner Bennett.
Commissioner Fox, I hear what you're saying, but I don't think, I don't think us voting for denial, even with your strongly worded language, which I really, I agreed with, forces a resubmit. It still goes before council. And as I understand our position, we're just making a recommendation. Council decides whether to approve it or not. So we could recommend to deny, council could approve it. You haven't forced a resubmit. And then the community gets what they get. I mean, perhaps there will be a wonderfully participatory process around the TIG, but we're left hoping and wishing and trusting. So I'm saying, because we don't know what the final outcome of this is going to be, regardless of our recommendation, let's make sure we hear all we need to hear from the community and council hears and everybody else hears it. So when it does go before council, regardless of the outcome, at least the community feels like they've been heard. That, that's what I'm, that, that's, that, that's why I'm saying that I would like to have another meeting. And maybe get some, and, and maybe it's not just listening to the community. I mean, we heard Stormwater say they're waiting for more analysis. We heard Traffic say they needed more analysis. So maybe we do get some of that, maybe the, we get additional conditions. I think we've all said we wish we had more conditions around certain elements. Maybe the applicant will develop some additional conditions. We've heard there's going to be a meeting with Partners for Environmental Justice and Chris Bass around the stormwater. We've heard that Stormwater wanted more specifics around GSI condition. So maybe we'll see some of that, that we wouldn't necessarily see if we vote for denial and it goes before council and whatever happens.
Commissioner Lampman.
Um, I just want to say that we all have a job to do here. And I, there are conditions that are, have been asked of the applicant from Stormwater that haven't been put in place. You know, the stormwater reports are not back yet. Um, these are things that we do as part of our job. And, you know, last night I did watch the, um, the, the council meeting and in that they had bu, both of our Buffalo Road, um, approve, or, you know, cases there. And they knew that traffic was a huge issue. And then they made decisions in accordance with that. What we're doing here is important work and we are fleshing out issues. That is our job. We're informing the council to make decisions based on what we're able to bring to light. And I think that that's part of the process. The fact that we have been asked for this expedited timeline, I think, is extraordinarily unfair. I also think that it's extremely concerning that there is a single investor um, who has that much power where everybody is going double time. The entire city council's working on this right now, planning commission's working on this. I have a regular job to do, you know, we're all spending time to go over, we're all bending over backwards. The community is establishing community engagement on their own. The develop, they, these are all things that the developer should have had vetted out for us ahead of time. And look at how many people are scrambling to get this deal passed through. And, you know, I think to, to Commissioner Miller's point, and I would like to vote yes on this project because I think it's awesome. I think that there's great opportunity here. I think there's great potential. But I'm not going to do it at the expense of people. We have seen that happen too many times throughout the country, not just in the South, but elsewhere as well. And in Denver, we can talk about that again too, about the homeless population that has just exploded out there because they built things too quick. I complimented Denver big time because they did a good job. But you know what they did really well? They planned it very, very well. The planning process was months and years in advance. Raleigh is a very exciting place right now. Number two in the world best places to live last year. We are getting, I mean, all sorts of people coming out east also to save money because they're tired of paying for everything in Silicon Valley. We have to meet, the community needs to know this too. We have to meet the demands of the, of the, the influx of people that are coming in. And we're trying to do that. We're not trying to be pro developer. We're not trying to be anti developer. We're trying to be smart about how we grow the city. And by being strong armed into making a decision within a couple of weeks, like not, I mean, and, and again, some of our, our evaluations like Buffalo Road took a while. It is, I think it is also- It is, I think it is also poorly reflected on the city if we allow a project like this of this size to go through without the amount of planning that goes into it. I think we put the city council in a bad position, and I think it's a poor reflection of us and our ability to, to meet the, the growth of the community that's coming in as well as supporting the existing community. So I don't like the fact that if I'm being told, if I don't vote on this, that I'm making a decision for the entire city of Raleigh and that no investment is going to go into South Raleigh now. That is a threat about, and that is the exact thing that we're talking about in this community is that this, they're being, like, everybody's being whipped around, being told what they can and cannot, like, what they, what they can and cannot accept. You know, what's going to go in there? And if we don't, we're not going to do it. It's, it's completely frustrating, and I'm, I'm a little emotional and irritated that the fact that my vote tonight is going to determine the future of, of South Raleigh. And I think that's completely unfair. And it's unfair for the people there. So, I mean, I, I, I am, I like the idea. I like the concept. I like the stadium. I like what it could do for Raleigh. I like the image that it could give for Raleigh. I like all those things. Not this way, though. You know, I mean, and the presentation itself is, is, you know, it, the, the presentation itself, just so that, you know, it, it looks scary. Like, it's got like a back, a, a dark background. It's like that SEPA, that, that, you know, almost black and white, and it's got these red downtown, or downtown south. You know, it's scary. It's scary. And these are the optics that are being brought forth on this transaction. And, and it's not, not right for me as, you know, to, to, my vote is going to, you know, determine the outcome of, of, of this community. I think it's completely unfair, and I, and I don't think that we should be doing a transaction or a deal or anything like this in this, in this nature. I do want to vote yes, but I can't. I'm, I'm done. I don't think I should say anymore.
Commissioner Lampman? So what I'm hearing Commissioner say is that we, we had a motion in a second. It's been rescinded. There's concern that the rezoning, as it's been presented to us, is inadequate for, for us to do an accurate review of it and make an accurate assessment of whether it should be denied or not, or approved. And so that puts us at a crossroads. We can, I think we've decided not to have, to set a motion tonight. We can meet again with some, I think it'd be helpful to have some specifics of what we're looking for at the next meeting. And, you know, perhaps at that time, we can revisit whether we, at that point, feel like we can make a motion. It would give an opportunity for us to receive additional information that was requested from Stormwater, which we've been instructed that there's not enough information there that was received to have an assessment by Stormwater. It would give an opportunity for the applicant to provide that and Stormwater to work with them. I'm a little fuzzy on what are, what the ask is for transportation. If someone wants to help me with that, and, and what, meeting again would allow, meeting again would provide the opportunity for the applicant to have the chance to provide answers to all these questions that we've had. I don't know that they'll be able to address the community involvement aspect of it. Commissioner Bennett?
With regard to the transportation ask, if Jason is still on the phone, he said something, the applicant changed the, the density, or they, they limited the amount of development on a parcel, and he said he could not give an assessment of how that changed the impacts without additional analysis.
Yep. He said different conditions require a revised TIA.
Right. So I think that's the, I think that's the transportation ask. Because if I'm, if I'm understanding the equitable development around transit piece, it sounds like the actions, once that would be adopted, the actions are primarily on the city end and not necessarily anything that the applicant would be asked to do. So I think what we're, we're kind of relying on transportation to give us an assessment of the impacts based on, based on what the applicant has changed.
Okay. So I think that's the Stormwater piece, the transportation piece. The community engagement piece is sort of outside of what our job is. And, and I tend to agree, putting the responsibility for that process to occur on the Planning Commission is not the appropriate location. So as a commission, how do we, is there a proposal for how we can address that? Or Commissioner Lampman?
How much time do folks need to get a review? I heard four business days. What's our deadline on this? The 10th? But I think what we've got to do...
January 11th.
No, I got you. I got you. I, I, I got you.
And to that point, I think we can't take action on condition number nine until the 14th. So with that in mind, you know, I think potentially the earliest it would make sense for us to meet, provided we get the feedback we need, would be Monday, the 16th. If everybody feels like they can get the information that we're asking in that timeframe. I think, is that what you're asking, Commissioner Lampman?
Yeah. And so if it's the 16th, I just, I want everyone to know, like, look at how hard we are trying. We aren't trying to do this, okay? We're not trying to. So, so if we've got the 16th, if that's the soonest we could get stuff back, I think Ben would probably be comfortable with that once he gets the material from the applicant. If we could hold a special meeting, I think what I, what my perception is, is that it needs to be voted out of the committee of the whole, and then it needs to go to a traditional committee in order for us to vote out of, I mean, sorry, out of our regular meeting.
So we could make the special meeting on Monday, the 16th, a special Planning Commission meeting, only to hear this case, which could allow us the ability, if we wanted to vote it out, to do so at that time. And I, I think that's what the recommendation would be.
Now, the other thing is too, and this is maybe for staff, you know, staff, we've done a couple of special meetings. Can council do special meetings? Can council, you know, I know that there's certain, you know, public hearings that need to happen. Can there be special public hearings?
Council can and does have special meetings. I can't recall in recent memory them doing the public hearing at something other than a normal council meeting date.
But it's possible, right? I mean, we're, we're bending. Can they bend?
I believe potentially yes. I mean, I can't make representations, but the council will and will not agree to, but I don't think there's any legal reason why it could not happen, although maybe David York has a more information than I do, but.
No, I don't, I mean, it's up to the, like Ken said, it's up to the city council as to whether or not they want to call a special meeting for any matter of business for the city.
I mean, the constraints are, no dis requirements.
But, you know, if there's this drop dead date, that's so important. You know, if we do have a special meeting, can we, can they still meet that?
Well, I mean, I'm not going to speak to the applicant's specific deadline because I don't know, I have a general idea of what it is, but I don't know the specific dates involved. I think there's a, uh, what, you know, you've got, the, the things driving the deadline are if you're going to get revised conditions, we've got to get them 10 days in advance. Then you have to meet 10 days advance. Then you got to report this to the council, and then the council has to be able to calendar a public hearing in enough time to meet the notice requirement. So if the deadline is sometime in December, we're definitely going to be pushing that up. If a, if a report goes to council later than November 17th, because, so even if they do a special meeting for the hearing, there's going to be some difficulty. The other wild card and, is that because of the statute that was passed governing how the conduct of these online meetings during the pandemic, if written comment comes in after the public hearing is closed, it forces a second reading of it, which I think, I'm not sure if there's a mandated time lag between the first hearing and the second reading of the ordinance before it can be passed, but there is some sort of window there. Maybe David York can weigh in as to what that is. But that would add some additional time in terms of final action, were there to be written comment directed at the council after the public hearing is closed and the vote is taken.
I'm sorry, Ken, I didn't follow what you wanted me to comment on. Which aspect did you want me to comment on?
Oh, I'm sorry. The aspect I wanted you to comment on was if the, if, if the council holds a public hearing, votes on the item, and written comment is received after that, how much, how, how long a delay that would be before they could take a second reading and re-vote the case?
The way we've written it up and the recommended actions on the council's agendas has been that they would take it up for a second reading if written comments received after the close of the public hearing at their next meeting. I don't believe it says at their next regular meeting. I believe it just says at their next meeting. After they reviewed their comments, but I can double check that language.
Yeah, that's what I was curious about, and whether that would allow for there to be a special meeting. But there's a certain, I believe, window of opportunity for which those written comments can come in after the action is, first action is taken. So there would be some, some additional potential delay after that, but after the close of the public hearing.
So it's 6 o'clock, 6:03, and our meeting is scheduled to end at 6:00. And I want to be respectful of everybody's time. So I think I hear commissioners in general in favor for holding another meeting on Monday, the 16th. And we've asked for input, and, and the applicant potentially, rather than it being in the form of a condition, can provide additional, the additional information requested in the Stormwater memo, which would not be a condition, which would not start that 10-day cycle. And then could also provide a revised TIA to reflect the conditions that we already have. And then that would also allow us to take action on condition number nine. So that's what I'm offering for the 16th. And I would ask all those that are in favor in proceeding in that way to raise their hand. I see one. And all those that are opposed to proceeding in that way to raise their hand. I see one.
I'm confused.
I can't work with that.
Wait, I'm confused.
What's that?
Wait, I'm confused because I, okay, so my confusion is many things. One, um, the, the 16th, so if you were okay to meet on the 16th, raise your hand. That was your question. If you're not okay to meet on the 16th, then raise your hand. So I was confused. I was confused by what I was seeing. That's one. And secondly, I'm confused about the, I'm, I'm confused, I'm confused about this November date all of a sudden. Not all of a sudden, but I'm confused by that. Because again, if we have, if the, what, it sounds like the deadline has moved. The deadline I keep seeing, and I've seen on every report, is January 11th, that it has to be voted out because that is the 90 days that has been allotted for the zoning for this here project. So I'm confused why, and I, I'm confused why I'm hearing a different day. I'm confused by that. I'm concerned by that. With all that we have going on in terms of the lack of specificity, the lack of information, what is this new date about voting it out about? Or, or to hear it, to vote it out, to take it, to plan it? I'm confused.
Who is that question addressed to?
Whoever proposed meeting in November, like, a new meeting in November, I think it was more so Jennifer, because Jennifer, I'm sorry, Commissioner Lampman, because you said, you were the one talking about having, having council have a special meeting, because all of these special meetings are seeming to address a certain deadline that is not consistent with the January 11th deadline that we have.
Okay. And I apologize. So did Bonner talk about timing when I, when I was off? I didn't want to ask about that. Did he talk about timing?
So please inform me about the timing, because you know something I don't.
Bonner, do you need to be talking about timing?
I'm, I'm happy to, if, if that would be helpful to, to the question. And I can, as you all know, I'm, I'm not the applicant. I'm representing the applicant. And my interest in this project is not based on a participation or investment, but providing an incredible long-term project for the city. So I'm not, I'm not speaking on behalf of the applicant. There is a closing scheduled for the end of the year, and these deliberations will inform that decision. And I, I cannot represent how the deliberations today will affect that and, and the timeline will affect that. I, I have been very clear that that closing exists, and there are proceeding actions that need to happen and decisions that need to be made in order to be prepared for that closing. And I, I just don't know where this will go based on our conversation today, and certainly don't have any criticism of, of the Planning Commission and your deliberations is certainly within your, within your purview. I think having a clearer understanding of what, the, what the array of desired conditions would likely help to inform how that, those next steps might occur.
All right. I'm just going to be a little bit more clear on this.
Commissioner Lampman? Yes.
Yeah. So, okay, so our deadline is January 11th. I think what we've heard over and over again is that the applicant is going to have trouble if this goes past the end of the year. So let's call that December 31st. So if we, if they need zoning...
Commissioner Lampman, in service of time, I believe the last city council scheduled meeting is in the first week of December, and then they're on holiday.
That's exactly right. So I guess like the 15th of December is a public hearing date, the 1st of December is a public hearing date. So that means that the council needs to receive this by the 17th, which then puts us, the reason why the managers put it in the documents, and I apologize, I didn't see that, but that November 10th is our drop dead date to put this through, because that's normal Planning Commission. But the issue is, is we're sitting in Planning of the whole, Committee of the Whole right now. So we have to vote it out of Committee of the Whole, so then it can go sit in Planning Commission. Problem is, is that now we have a GIS condition that's outstanding. We might have more Stormwater conditions outstanding that are going to create an, an additional delay. So now we're squeezing all that in so that they can get an approval before the end of the year. So now we're squeezing all that in so that they can get an approval before the end of the year. So if we do not vote on this before the end of the year, and not just that, so that council can vote on it before the end of the year, then downtown South Raleigh is completely done. Then it's, so if we don't vote on this in the next week, week and a half, then it's not going to, it's not going to go through is what my understanding is. So I think that that's, that's a really tough syndrome that I think we're in as the planning commission.
It, I think we need to make a decision. It's 6:10. And I think we're clear that the commission feels like they need some more time. So I would move that we send this zoning rezoning case to a special planning commission meeting on Monday, November 16th to hear additional requested information from the applicant and staff.
Do we have to vote it out of committee of the whole though?
Yep. So do I have a second? Commissioner Bennett.
I'm sorry, I know we're trying to get out of this meeting, but I have a question because when you were, I'm not opposed to that, but when you were talking about it before, you said something like, we're not necessarily asking the applicant to come back with additional conditions. We just want the additional information.
That is an option, which would then, if we could be satisfied with additional information, for instance, the items on the stormwater memo, a revised TIA, then that wouldn't trigger the 10-day process necessary for us in order to act upon.
But then we're acting upon a hope and a wish that they do. I mean, the additional information is coming from stormwater saying, we want you to do this. But where does the applicant say, okay, we're going to do this and then we can make a recommendation with these conditions? It seems like it's useless if we're just getting the information from the city and the applicant's like, oh yeah, that's great. But where's the condition? I understand we can't really require transportation conditions because NC DOT has to be involved in all that. But with stormwater, it sounds like there might be an opportunity to attach some conditions. If we can't see those at this next meeting, then I don't know what we're doing it for.
Okay, well, I have a motion on the table. I don't know. Is there a second?
I don't know what the motion is. Is it for them to come back with updated conditions based on the comments they've received from the city or is it just for additional information?
Well, mine was for additional information. I'm hearing that there's interest in them being additional conditions. So we'll just take a
I have a question.
I'd like to just take a vote so we know it doesn't pass so we can move on to the next thing. So do I have to take a roll call?
Is there a second?
I don't think there was a second.
There wasn't a second, so it fails. So we can move on to the next thing. I mean, we do have the option of moving out of committee of the whole, the special PC meeting on Monday without that's an option too. Isn't that correct?
Correct.
Could you say that again? I couldn't hear you.
We could move it out of committee of the whole tonight to a special planning commission meeting on Monday, November 16th without recommendation.
Correct.
I'm happy to entertain a motion of some sorts. If we don't set a special meeting, you know, then then we would we meet on the 10th, but with planning commission meeting, which this case would not be on that agenda unless we moved it out. And then council will meet on the 17th and our next planning commission meeting would be, would have been on Tuesday, the 24th, but there was some talk about perhaps meeting on Thursday, the 19th instead. Since that's, you know, close to the holiday. That's kind of what we have to work with for next steps. And I'm happy to entertain a motion for next steps. Commissioner Lamont.
I will make a motion if I can, but the, can stormwater get their analysis and have them apply conditions before it comes to our planning commission, our special planning commission meeting?
So, well, is stormwater going to answer the question about their ability to?
I was until somebody started talking.
Okay, you go first and I'll answer, then I'll answer the question about, I'll answer the question about conditions.
Yes, the only variable out there is that I don't know when the applicant can get the announce back to city staff. So if, so if the deadline for conditions is 10 days, then then, and if that's tomorrow, from what I've heard from the, from the other speakers, then I don't think the applicant is going to give you that study and me be able to go through it by tomorrow. So if you want to base a condition off that study, that timing will not work out.
Unless you went with a condition similar to what Ben alluded to earlier in his, in one of his previous answers, that mitigation would be made if a study revealed that it was necessary. I haven't seen the wording of that type of condition, but I think that's the only type of stormwater condition that Ben had indicated he had seen before that dealt with the issues we're dealing with before the study was completed. And I don't want to put words in your mouth, Ben. If I remembered that incorrectly, please correct me.
Nope, that's correct.
I think it might be useful to hear from the applicant. And I think he wants to speak.
Yes, we would be glad to talk about a condition that we could submit with stormwater. We have talked about the condition that's currently part of the case deals with water quality. And it ensures that the water from the site coming off the site will be cleaner than today and goes above and beyond the city standard. So that addresses the concern of, are we going to make it better? So the question is, of course, quality and quantity. Are we going to make it better? Quality, yes, we are going to make it better. And we have been analyzing on the quantity piece of how to make it better with the context of the question being the downstream neighborhoods flood. The applicant needs to make a commitment that the flooding condition will not become any worse with the development. And so we want to take that further and commit to make it better. And so we are working on a condition that commits to make the peak flow rate in Walnut Creek to decrease, meaning improve the condition of the peak flow rate for the 10-year 24-hour storm, the 50-year 24-hour storm and the 100-year 24-hour storm as modeled at the intersections of Walnut Creek and Wilmington Street, Garner Road, South State Street and the unknown name tributary of Walnut Creek to Bailey Drive. So we are ready to make that stormwater commitment that we are going to improve the flooding condition. And we have already committed to improve the quality of the water on the site. There are additional components that we're investigating and there's a lot of technical analysis of how to accomplish these things. However, there, from the very beginning, I committed to you all that we would be able to resolve two of the four items that were put before us by Reverend Taylor and PEJ and One Wake. And those two were storm, was improve the flood condition and, or make it no worse is the, and then the other is utilizing GSI principles, which we've already included as a condition. So make the flooding better, GSI principles, check, check. I've done those two. The two that were remaining are the CBA or similar legal agreement, which is the TIG slash equity fund and the commitment to affordable housing, which will be accomplished through the equity fund. So that is what we're, we're ready to offer and hopefully that will be helpful for deliberations with the commission.
Okay, I'm happy to entertain a motion.
Can those conditions be submitted tomorrow so they can get there in time?
We're working on the verbiage and dialing in perfectly. We actually had it originally in the presentation and then we found a snag with the wording. So I think we can, we can have that done. I'm looking to the team and they're saying yes. So, okay.
If those are submitted tomorrow, then they could be part of the official record on the 16th. Is that right, staff?
That's correct. And of course, the purpose for the 10-day window is to provide opportunity for staff review. So they don't have to be perfectly polished. They just have to be something that we can review and make sure that they're ready for inclusion in the agenda packet after the staff review for the meeting that you're scheduling.
Commissioner Winters.
Just interested, could staff use Chris Bass's analysis?
I would defer that question to stormwater.
I have seen in the One Wake letter Chris, Chris Bass's report, but I haven't seen an actual analysis from Chris Bass.
Commissioner Bennett.
Excuse me, my question was related, or I guess my comment was that, as I understand it, a meeting is forthcoming between the development team and Chris Bass. So if we received a condition tomorrow, it wouldn't reflect that meeting. The conditions that Mr. Gaylord just said sound like a very generalized version of what we saw from Partners for Environmental Justice. They're very specific conditions. And so I'd like for that meeting to take place to see if the applicant is in agreement with those conditions or any of those conditions and what we might see. I realize we wouldn't necessarily get that tomorrow unless the meeting happened tomorrow and they could update their conditions. But I don't think the generalized conditions that Mr. Gaylord just said represented the detailed conditions that we saw in the letter from Partners for Environmental Justice.
So here's a question. If we were to meet on Thursday, the 19th instead of the 16th, would that allow the applicant enough time to have that meeting and include condition, you know, based on that took into account their meeting with PEJ and make, make the timing work such that, you know, they have the conditions to have the 10 days.
Chair Hicks, there is already a meeting of the committee of the whole scheduled for November 19th. That's the regular meeting of the committee of the whole.
So if the, as I understood, the condition that's under contemplation on stormwater is specifying an outcome, not a, not a means. So they're not committing to any particular stormwater devices or treatments. They are committing to future flow rates as calculated by stormwater modeling for the downstream conditions. And so what's, what's being left and said is the specific means to which they'll achieve it. And obviously there has to be agreement amongst the experts from the city side, the development team, that the modeling is being done properly to produce that result. Because obviously the, the result is going to be a calculated result, not an actual real world result because we can't know the real world result until the storm event occurs and then after the development is built. So I think that what, what could potentially happen is a condition of that nature is submitted for staff review tomorrow. Subsequent to that, if there's a meeting between the applicant's team and Chris Bass and there's a general agreement, the condition is workable or it may be minor tweaks or something that would probably go through. If it produces an entirely different condition that's significantly different in substance to what's produced tomorrow, I'm not sure that that would be something that could be available for you to vote on on November 16th.
Would additional, if, if we heard it on our regular committee of the whole meeting on the 19th, would those couple of days provide enough time?
They provide just a couple more days in terms of the 10-day supplemental window to staff. They don't provide, they obviously provide three more days. So we're talking, talking Monday instead of tomorrow. The, so I don't think that's going to make a material difference in terms of their ability to schedule a meeting with Chris Bass. Have that be reflected in the draft, initial drafting of the condition? I think the initial drafting, the condition's going to have to be something like, if you're trying to meet this deadline, it would be, it would be drafting something along the lines as to what was just proposed and submitting that tomorrow and then doing some additional due diligence and seeing if that holds up to that due diligence.
And so my follow-up question is, is there somebody other than Chris Bass that the applicant can talk to? Is there just, is it just the sole proprietor? It seems like they've tried several times, at least that's what we've been told, and he's never available. And so it'd be very useful if there was somebody else who is qualified to meet with, with the applicant. Do we know that?
Well, I mean, obviously we have our own engineering experts here on staff who are meeting with the applicant. In terms of a third party, you know, I think Chris Bass's name is there simply because he has volunteered work for these organizations. And, and no one else. And obviously there's lots of other engineering firms, but the question is who's going to retain them to do that work?
I guess Chris Bass is the sole proprietor. I don't know either. It's a little frustrating, I think, that this is, you know, it's an unknown. There's nobody here to represent them and we're trying to make decisions based on, you know, no information. So thank you. Commissioner, I think McIntosh, you had your hand up?
I just wanted to remind the commission that the reason we're asking for Chris Bass's input is he did this work for Partners for Environmental Justice. And this is the group that's advocating for the neighborhood. And so Chris Bass's work is representing the wishes of the community and that's why we're asking that he be involved.
Right.
It didn't sound to me, I, I'm sorry. You know, it sounded to me that with the timeline and the difficulty of meeting, I don't think it's fair to blame Chris Bass's schedule over the past week or whenever this meeting was trying to be made. That doesn't feel fair to me when it's clear this project has been in planning for a long time and is, you know, ready to go to site plan early next year. To question the ability of scheduling of a community representative feels unfair to me.
Okay, and I apologize. I'm not blaming him for Okay, and I apologize, I'm not blaming him for doing something wrong. I'm just expressing some frustration that we're in a position where we're, you know, there's a lot of decision-making that's hinging on information that we don't have access to, like availability. Commissioner Bennett.
I'm in receipt of an email that says Chris Bass has been in contact with Kane within the past couple of days, and there is a meeting tentatively scheduled for early next week.
Again, that's not very specific information.
Well, you know, I mean, I'm I'm kind of echoing Mr., I mean, Commissioner McIntosh. Everybody has been put in this position of shuffling around, trying to meet other people's schedules. I guess they're doing the best they can. If 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 the Kane Development Team has been in contact with Partners for Environmental Justice as much as they say they have, then they should, what's the problem? I mean, because Chris is with environmental, with Partners for Environmental Justice, as I understand it. So they have a direct conduit to Partners for Environmental Justice. If you can't get a meeting, call the guy, or he has sent a letter. So respond to what the letter says if you can't get an in-person meeting. I mean, we're trying to accommodate schedules. So I'm certainly not going to blame Chris Bass if he can't schedule a meeting. But the email says they've been in contact. So the they haven't been in contact apparently is not accurate. Or maybe Mr. Gaylord hadn't been updated of that information. It didn't say they had been in contact with him specifically, but with the Kane team, and a meeting has been set, so.
So and and again, I'm not blaming Chris Bass for somehow, you know, being in the wrong here. And I I agree with you, if they've been in contact, then, you know, they've been in contact.
Right, I understand, I understand.
And maybe, and it's been suggested that could, could the applicant at least get a hold of the report that Chris Bass did, not not just the letter, but the actual report that he did? I think that's a good question. I think Mr. Gaylord would like to speak. I do want to be respectful of everybody's time. It's 6:33. And I feel like these are all important questions that that everyone's asking. To certain extent, they're similar questions to what we've been asking over the last few meetings. And what I would like is to create a path forward for, for our next meeting. What we'd like to achieve is our next steps as a commission. So I think it would be fair, since the applicant is asking to speak, to give him a moment to speak, I'd ask that he be as brief as possible. And then I'd like to bring it back to the table so that we can determine whether we want to have a special meeting scheduled to hear some of this additional items that we've talked about, or whether we're planning to hear it at our meeting that's already scheduled for the 19th. Mr. Gaylord, are you geared up?
Yes, I just wanted to respond that we certainly have analyzed the letter from from Chris Bass and are excited to talk through that, the letter with him and and our questions and responses. And I I there's not any conditions specifically suggested within his letter. However, he touches on a number of concepts that we are utilizing as part of our conditions and some objectives that we're accomplishing and want to have a conversation about how that fits with the the St. Ambrose and PEJ and and One Wake, what, how it fits their objectives. And so that that conversation was set for 4:00 PM on Monday. I'm hearing from the team, it was set right as this meeting was beginning. So I did not have that information as quickly as Ms. Bennett did. So I'm glad, glad to get that on my calendar.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is there's a meeting set with Chris Bass for this Monday. Make sure I get the date right, the 9th at 4:00 PM. I'm also hearing from the commission in general that there's probably not an interest in having him be holding a meeting on the 16th. So with that in mind, so if if there's a meeting on the 9th, and there's adjustments that are made based on that meeting in order for us to hear any new conditions, we need 10 days, is that correct? So that would put us like the 18th? Am I doing, looking at the calendar properly, properly? So then we could potentially meet on the 19th as scheduled and see, see where we land. It'll be, you know. So and I, anyway, I think that's what I'm proposing. Sorry, I'm reading text at the same time as speaking, is to allow the applicant time to meet with Chris Bass, address some of these additional items, if there are additional conditions, which is what we're looking for, they could be, they would, I guess, have to be provided on Monday in order to satisfy the 10-day turnaround so that we could hear them and act on them on Thursday, the 19th. And I think at that meeting, we'll be hearing, we'll be discussing the EDAT, so we could also discuss this case then as well. I guess I'll, by a raise of hands, all those in favor of proceeding in that way, raise your hand. It looks like it's unanimous. But thank you. I appreciate all the dialogue and getting through all the details and dealing with my little bit of frustration. And so we will plan to hear this case again on the 19th, understanding that there's a meeting happening on the Monday, the 9th with Chris Bass. And this sort of implying that new, any new conditions would have to, would have to be made on, I think, Monday, the 9th in order for us to hear it on the 19th and act on it. Is that something that the applicant feels like they can work with?
We will certainly, we will certainly do our best. There's a, a lot of analysis and coordination that needs to go into these conditions, and we will, we will do our best to try and hit the mark and understand that there's a strong desire for, to make this this perfect. And we will do our best and and see how far we can, we can get in this, during this rezoning process. And I'll also note that there are, there are likely components that are in excess of what can be committed to at the rezoning process. And at the same time, the tax, the the Equity Fund can increase those standards. And so what we've committed to is to make it better. We have committed to improve the flooding situation and to improve the water quality. And that was the objective that was set for us initially, which we have have are delivering on. And I I'm not sure how to represent the additional components, because a lot of what's what's out there right now are concepts that are being requested to think through. And it's not necessarily a specific request or a specific condition. So I I just want to be accurate and fair in setting expectations.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And that, and I recognize that's a quick turnaround. One little wrinkle, I think the 19th is the last time we'll meet in November. So with that in mind, do we want to set, set that Thursday meeting as a special planning commission meeting to discuss this case and discuss EDAT so that should we want to vote it out, we would have that option before us? Does staff have any feedback on that that we should know?
Yeah, let me pull up the chart we showed earlier. There is a regular planning commission meeting scheduled on Tuesday, November 24th, I believe. Is that correct, Ken and Travis?
As far as I know, there is, unless it's been canceled. But I'm not sure why it would be.
Right, so this, these are the meetings left, the regularly scheduled meetings left before the January 11th deadline. Got a meeting next Tuesday, that's the planning commission. There's a meeting on the 19th of the Cal, and the equitable revelling plan is to be reviewed there. There's a regular PC meeting on the 24th, that's your last meeting in November. The planning commission meets again on December 8th. There's only one planning commission meeting in December. That'll be the last meeting, regularly scheduled meeting before your deadline of January 11th. January 11th is a Monday, so your first meeting in January is January 12th, so outside of the deadline. So if you don't act by January, December 8th, or if there's no special meeting after December 8th, on that day, you can request an extension or make a recommendation to the city council.
And just as a reminder, if the, if the extension were not to be granted, that would automatically pass the case out of planning commission without a recommendation.
Thank you. Okay, so. So I can't see commissioners, but is there any interest in holding the meeting on, well, yeah, holding the meeting on the 19th? Before I ask that, let me ask staff, our scheduled meeting for Thursday, the 19th, which is the Committee of the Whole meeting, are there items on that agenda outside of the EDAT and potentially this case?
Let me check the calendar. I'm not sure offhand, one second. I believe the Raleigh Beach Road PD is scheduled to reappear on that agenda as well. Oh, that's Z 2419.
All right, thank you. So by a show of hands, is there any interest in, once we hear Beach Road, we could then shift to a special planning commission meeting on the 19th to hear this case and potentially EDAT? By a show of hands, if you're in favor of doing that, raise your hand if you're, if you're an I. Okay, so that's unanimous. So what I'm proposing then is, just to reiterate, on Thursday, the 19th, there's a regularly scheduled Committee of the Whole meeting, we'll hear Beach Road, then we'll shift to a special planning commission meeting to hear this case and potentially talk about EDAT. And we will hopefully have additional conditions that we can act upon and the information that we've been seeking. And I'm trusting that I don't need to reiterate exactly what those are. Commissioner Fox.
So are you moving right now from Committee of the Whole to a special planning commission meeting without a recommendation?
Yes, so I think, I guess procedurally, we have to make a motion to do that. So I move to move this case, Z 1320 Downtown South, out of Committee of the Whole to a special planning commission meeting on Thursday, the 19th with no recommendation. And I guess we need to take a roll call for that. Shanitha, could you give us a roll call? Sorry, I need a second before we can take roll calls. Sorry, I'm getting tired. Do I have a second? Commissioner Fox?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Shanitha, we're ready for you.
Okay, sorry. Commissioner Bennett, how do you vote?
Aye, I guess, aye.
Commissioner Fox?
Aye.
Commissioner?
Aye.
Commissioner Lattman?
Aye.
Commissioner Mann?
He's recused.
Oh, recused, I'm sorry, okay. Commissioner McIntosh?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Wint?
Nay.
Okay, so that's one vote against, the remaining are four. So the motion passes. Thank you all very much. So with that, this meeting is concluded. I thank you, everybody, for staying late and appreciate all the input from staff, the applicant, and fellow commissioners. And we are adjourned. Have a good evening.